Call the regular Board of Education. Monthly meeting to order. I have to wait for Ms. Hibbs to call back and then we'll call roll. All right, Mrs. Felter.
Here.
Mrs. Martin. Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Polan. Mr. Shear.
Here.
Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to everyone. Thank you for coming out on a cold night. I understand we have some guests in the audience tonight who are here learning about the work of the school board. God bless you. Alex Wheeler, Gage Bunting, Trent Arnold, Daniel Cook, Emmett Fitzgerald. I hope I caught everyone who's here as a student or interested in learning more about the school board and the workings of the school district. Thank you for being here. We appreciate it. All right, moving on then to our first items on the agenda. Those will be information and presentations. And our first one is item 2.01, the Olahtha Adopt a School Partnership Program. Dr. Banikowski and Ms. Schoenover.
Just take a moment here and pull up our PowerPoint. We have an opportunity to talk to you just a little bit tonight about the adopted school partnership that's making a great difference in our school district. You know, when recently, well, last year, Heather and I and Larry Katz have at the time had an opportunity to speak at a national conference. And one of the things that we're speaking about was our adopted school program. It was so nice to be able to stand up in front of folks and say, "Our Board of Education supports partners in education" in a variety of ways. And I threw up there just some of our information that we have, for example, in our brochure, about what our Board of Education does. Not every board or school district espouses that it's important for the community to be a partnership with the school district. So it's great to talk about how important our Board feels that partnership endeavors are for our schools and our students. In fact, you even have a Board of Education Strategic Direction that talks about engaging and involving all district stakeholders. And so I think that further demonstrates how important you believe partners are to education. You know, there's a lot of partnership opportunities in the district. And I started to put them on a graph and decided I needed bigger graphs. So I just, and the list goes on. Whether we're talking about youth mentors or we're talking about alumni association, we're talking about parent groups or watchdogs or we're talking about senior serving schools, we certainly have lots of partners that are helping us in the process of educating young people. And tonight, we just want to talk about one of those, and that's the adopted school partnership. And we actually are unveiling a new logo this evening, so that's always kind of exciting, that will help brand what we're doing with our adopted school process. As we look at that, I want to take us back just a little. And it was almost really about four years ago. And we had an opportunity that Dr. Barry had a meeting with a group called the Citywide Prayer Movement of Kansas City. Just a few people that came into the room. And Dr. Barry asked me to sit in as well. And had an opportunity to hear from them a vision that they had of faith-based partners being involved in the school district. What we since found out really was kind of funny was, well, I think it's kind of different. Dr. Barry thought that they had asked to come see us and they thought that Dr. Barry had asked them to come see us. Well, so no one was quite sure why, but we fortuitously got together and we had a great conversation about how our faith-based partners could be important for our process. From that point, we had an opportunity to actually vision out, because many public school districts are a little bit nervous about having faith-based organizations help in their school districts, in their public school districts. We had an opportunity to, and we ended up calling that Caring for Kids, and an opportunity to meet with different pastors, different churches, and talk about some needs that we had in our school district that we believed our faith-based partners could help. Well, of course, we already had business partners, civic partners for our schools, and we were just adding that faith-based element. And in fact, we set a goal that every school would have a minimum of one business, one faith-based partner, and one civic, community, parent, that was kind of a loose group, that we would have involved in our schools in an adopted school process, which is really much more of a long-term relationship between these entities and the school that they have selected to adopt. One of the things that has made such a difference for us is that we do have a leadership team, which has evolved a little bit over time. You see the Citywide Prayer Movement individuals first listed there. And I'm hoping some of them are, I know some of them are here this evening. And so I thought maybe if they could just stand and we could recognize them from the Citywide Prayer Movement. I don't believe Gary Schmidt or Esther Mitchell could be here this evening, but Terri Green is, who is actually now specifically with Caring for Kids. And she's been with us since the beginning. Rick Box from Integrity Resources is here. He was with us at the beginning. Ann Oswald has joined us as a business partner and an adopted school partner. Kim Petrus from Chick-fil-A is with us, and we're very happy to have her. I don't know if Greg, Greg Howard was on vacation. I told him he should stay on vacation and not come. And Amy from Mission Southide. And I do believe that Nancy has joined us. And she was with our original group. And of course, it's facilitated by Heather Schoenover and myself. So that really makes a difference. We get together almost monthly and an opportunity to talk about where we are, what other schools need partners, and ways that we can encourage businesses, faith-based organizations, civic organizations to be partners with our schools. And in fact, we are so creative or strategic, if maybe is a better word. We actually have a map that has all the churches identified in the Olahtha community that serve the Olahtha school district so that we can make sure that we're involving as many churches and faith-based organizations as we can. We also have the same thing for businesses, and there's lots of dots. It changes all the time, but at least gives us something to work from as we're helping to get partners for all of our schools. Here's just a few picturals, just to give us an idea. We have an opportunity where we kick off the adopted school process for a school. And this just shows them at the IRC and they're by school and the different partners around the table. An opportunity, you can see they're very engaged. An opportunity to talk about what the needs are of the school, what the needs are of the partners, and how we can match that together, doing a lot of brainstorming and thinking. And that's been a great opportunity. We also, oh, I always thought that was an attitude. We're very smiling. We use a process. We identify needs, and that usually brought forth by the principal or the leaders from the building as saying, "Gosh, these are our needs that we have that we think that the partners can fulfill." We develop certainly a relationship that's so important. We have an action plan that is developed and then implement that action plan. And of course, we do a lot of celebrating when we accomplish different things with that action plan. And the action plans I'll talk a little bit about are very varied. We actually are organized, and we have a Dropbox that's common to all of us. We have an opportunity to keep names and addresses and telephone numbers. And that way, we're not picking the same partner if we're lacking a business partner for a school. We're not always going to the same business. We have an opportunity to go to different businesses because we know everybody wants to be involved. And we also have action plans that are on the Dropbox, an opportunity for us to kind of, and they're very simplistic action plans, but an opportunity to say, "Gosh, these are the three things we're going to do this year." The one thing, the 10 things. Some of them are very, really going. Here are some examples of the kind of action plans that they've had. Beautifying the school has been one. Lots of mentoring going on with students. In fact, since August, we have 117 new mentors just from the adopted school process. And so you can imagine how wonderful that is. Certainly an opportunity to get things. You can see some special beanbag chairs there that the students are sitting on, reading to students. And that's a great way that we've had from our adopted school partners. You can also see certainly helping again with mentoring, the back snack program, coats for students, clothes, and of course, a little fun things of getting the kids excited about learning. Certainly, we have an opportunity to teach our students what it's like to give back. For example, the Habitat for Humanity partnership is a great way our students are learning to give back. And we certainly want them to learn that service learning opportunity as they grow older and become members of communities themselves. So lots of opportunities that we have that our adopted school partners have fulfilled. We have learned a lot about our adopted school process. We've always had partners. But in the adopted school process, which is trying to be long-term partners, we have a district vision. We have very strategic, so we're always trying to get more partners. And we're looking at our map, but we're looking at who we can involve. We have an ongoing leadership team. You've met some of them here this evening. Our partners meet together with the school, so with the principal and some leaders from that building and the partners around the table. That way, we can be very strategic and really accomplish what that school needs. We also spend time and build relationships. We have specific projects. And we really, sometimes if we need a liaison, it can't always be the principal. It can't obviously be the pastor. It can't always be the owner of a business. So we had, so those are some of the things that we have learned. We recognize that our community is very, very important to us as a school district. Our community recognizes the importance of schools. They give financial support, and they have great involvement. And that isn't true in every place. In fact, when we had an opportunity to present nationally, people were like, "How did you make this happen?" Well, I said, "We are surrounded by a community that really cares for and uplifts our schools and our students in those schools." We certainly know that educating young students takes partnerships, relationships, and stakeholders. It takes all of us. We know certainly educating students is like putting a lot of puzzle pieces together. And our partners can really help and make a difference with that. So adopted school, alive and well. Have great opportunities. And we're hoping that by talking tonight, we're even going to get more partners. And, but really, Olahtha, our adopted school partnership does make a difference for students, staff, and for everyone. That's it. So Heather and I will stand for questions. And some of you know intimately about this because you are an adopted school partner.
Dr. Banikowski, quick question. Earlier in the presentation, you said that you had a, the adopted school program had a goal that every school would have a partner. Have we met the goal?
We're not quite there. And in fact, every school, we believe, will have hopefully three partners. We're really strong in the groups. We have a couple more schools that we're bringing on this spring. They have partners, but maybe not quite as strategic. So we're getting closer. We watch that all the time. We have some times where a partner might have to leave us for a while. So that school needs another, either faith-based partner, faith-based partner, or a business partner. And so it does change over time. But we're monitoring that constantly. And Heather brings to the table at one of our meetings, "Oh, my gosh, so-and-so school doesn't have one." So we're getting very close. And our goal is to be able to say to you, "Up 100%." And of course, some of our bigger schools, we need more partners than just one of those.
Yeah, because as a district, we've always focused on and wanted to make sure that we had equality across all schools. So, and I would want to ensure that we're using some kind of marketing strategy to be sure that we're getting that kind of balance across all schools.
Really, we're monitoring every school and every partnership.
I would like to add, you know, I credit that senior leadership in the Board has really taken to heart the importance of partners within our schools. We have district partners, but this adopted school model is very, very key. But Mr. Parker, I do want to point out strategically on that question, yes, we do focus on making sure that all the schools do have a business, faith, and civic partners. And as people may retire in a business, a pastor may leave, a civic organization president may leave, we look at making sure that those partnerships are maintained. But also, from a marketing standpoint, we can learn from each other. So if a business has people that might belong to a civic organization, they reach out and then bring those partners to the table. So it has truly been a win-win for all.
I thank you, and I appreciate that effort to make sure that we have good balance and equality across the district.
I do want to say initially, I think, in this community, when they reach out to help, maybe it was the perception of Title I schools. And we look at all of our schools, from preschool all the way up to a high school, that everyone needs a partner, even if it would be a community that might not see socioeconomic needs. They can learn from giving back to those in our community and from those leadership roles, from our leaders in our business and civic partners. So yes, every school is looked at.
Heather, do we have someplace where we're keeping track of all these, even the business partners someplace?
Yes.
Easy for us all to see it? Because obviously, if they're working with the school district, and I'm big on local partnership and getting back to the businesses here locally, how do we know, just as parents and everything else, who are some of these people that are partnering with us?
As an example, it's done in different levels. So we shared with you tonight our importance of the Dropbox. And that is not so. Our team, Community Development, it's small but mighty. We have three of us tracking all of this. And so our team would track that in Dropbox, but then the principals can keep track of their action plans. But Mr. Shear, I also want to share with you that we have another database that tracks who the civic partners are, who the business partners are, because we have business partners who aren't adopted school partners, who strictly want to help. We might have an Olahtha Medical Center that wants to help the entire district, a farmers that might want to help the entire district. We have partners that help our 21st Century programs. We have partners that strictly want to help our homeless students. So we track all of that. And then we also have a database for our volunteers. So we can track the volunteer hours, who they are, what group they come from, and we can generate reports for those partners as well. Tracking as far as, we try to track in-kind, product, volunteer hours, and any donations that we get.
So what, but my question kind of, and it's great that we have that information. But how do we put it out to the public? Because again, if we've got business partners and civic partners that are doing things for the school district, then in turn, I'd like to do more business with them. But where do I see that as a parent saying, "Hey, I want to..."
Here's where it's released. We actually, our team, where, as we shared tonight, is our new logo. And we're working on a communication plan on that recognition. It kind of comes in tiers. And so we might have, we bring our partners up in front of the Board, or we might list them as a partner. But we're looking long-term strategically to look at a communication plan. Do we need a newsletter? Do we need a recognition event of all these adopted schools? We bring them together and recognize them in the meetings that we showed tonight and do those things. But we're looking long-term at those of how we list all those partners, you know, that type of thing.
And we're meeting with Maggie Kulp. We've already met a couple times. And we're looking at what would be the best way to be able to share that. Because as Heather said, this is just the adopted school partnership we've kind of highlighted tonight. But we have district-wide partners. We have senior-serving schools. We had the retired association. So we have just so many employees association. We have just so many different partners. And of course, the Olahtha Public Schools Foundation and all their partners that help make it happen. So there's just so many partners that we're very fortunate, you know. Recently, and I believe it was Maggie that said this quote, "Every child benefits from a supportive community." And we're very fortunate to have that kind of supportive community here in Olahtha.
Any other comments but your questions?
Let me ask one more question. Is it any profile, business, small business? You'll take anybody?
Oh, yes, we have all kinds of levels. Because some, which I think sometimes a small business has shied away from a little bit of adopted school. "Oh, gosh, we can't do that." But every partner can be of benefit, whether they have a partner, maybe they only have three people in their business, that those three people can help in some way. It just may not be as grandiose as, you know, when we had 200 people. But people coming together, many hands make like the work. So certainly, we can get a lot of people involved and at our schools, and we'll take any level of business, won't we? I think our action team is constantly looking for different businesses. We've been in front of the chamber. But we need some more strategic opportunities. And I said, you know, every, obviously, faith-based partner, every business, every civic organization, I can't believe they wouldn't want to be a partner in some capacity with their schools.
Thank you. We will move on now to item 2.02, a presentation on safety and security by Dr. Dewan.
I was going to have Heather Schoenover come back, and you can see how it's twin Thursday here at the board meeting.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to provide an update on the district's ongoing actions in terms of safety and security and also some new initiatives in that area. Sadly, this week marks about a year since the school tragedy in Newtown, Connecticut. And certainly, it's been a year of national dialogue and discussion about school safety for students and staff and families. And that's been for us as well, looking at our practices and procedures and processes. But that's been a discussion and analysis we've been doing in our district for a number of years. One of the stories I like to share just briefly is, like many of you, after the events in Newtown, I spent too many hours watching the network news, hours and hours, watching a variety of experts and folks talk about this and just worried about, were we doing enough in our district? And did we have the right practices and procedures in place? And did families feel safe? And so I shared with Dr. Barry, Monday morning, I just drove to the Neighborhood Elementary School, and I parked, and I said, "I'm just going to watch." What, and they all came back. The families dropped them off. Moms lingered a little bit longer. More staff were on sidewalks greeting kids as they showed up. But we had no attendance issues that Monday. Our families have continued, and our students continue to tell us they feel safe in our schools. Doesn't mean we're complacent, aren't continuing to look at it. Our recent parent survey, over 90% of our parents report their student is or feels safe in our schools. Our student survey, Communities That Care, which is a state survey, our students report 94% of our students say their school is a safe place. And that's compared to a Kansas State average of about 85%. So we have data that continues to tell us that our customers, our students and their families, feel safe. And we watch students return after a national tragedy feeling safe in our schools. What I want to share with you tonight, there we go, in three different areas, just some general things we do and then some more specific things we've done as a result of the community support of our bond and specifically those dollars that have been dedicated to safety and security. Three areas, personnel and training. I'll talk a little bit about each. Facilities and equipment and communication. In terms of personnel and training, as you guys know, in about 2008, we added a manager of safety and security, Mr. Laverne Fields. He certainly followed a lot of the work done by Dr. Bob Hall in terms of crisis management. What Laverne brought to our district was an expertise in public safety and a sole focus on staff and student safety and security in our schools, in a growing district, and how can we be strategic? At a district level, we have a crisis management team. And I'll talk a little bit about some of their actions. And each of our buildings has a crisis management team that is directed to stay current and stay up to date with our protocols and processes. Our district-level crisis management team meets every quarter. And one of the main practices of that meeting is we review critical incidents that have happened that quarter to learn from them. And best practice in the security, safety world is when you have critical incidents, a power outage, folks that have robbed the Walmart and are near our schools, that were spending time as a district. How did we respond? How quickly did we respond? Do we have protocols in place to respond well? And that happens on a quarterly basis with a district team. The district team also includes our public safety officials, Olahtha, Lenexa, Overland Park, police, fire, Johnson County Emergency Management folks, all together actually in this room, discussing how we're responding to critical incidents in our district. So really, a state-of-the-art practice in Laverne Field leads that. Lots of standardized processes and procedures. I think I've stood before you guys before with our crisis manual book. We've come of age technology-wise, and so that's also now electronic. So all of our building administrators and others from their iPad can go to a Dropbox and pull up any of our protocols and have a step-by-step for the actions they need to take. Because critical incidents sometimes happen in the middle of the night or after contract hours. And we needed that in the hands of our administrators. So that's been in place part of last year and all this year, and we're excited by that. I'll talk a little bit about drills in a minute. Two of the best practices in terms of personnel and what we need to be doing with our staff, we've been working on for a number of years. Part of that's school visitor management. And kind of in the top 10 practices and things that have come out in this past year in the national discussion has been, how do you manage the folks that come and go from your building? And one of the things we know about in Olahtha, we've been working on this for a number of years. It has been a goal for us to actively manage the visitors to and from our schools. In our elementary schools, we had started adding our pinch-point front offices and our video camera and buzzer system. And obviously, since the bond, we're able to now accelerate that process. So that continues to be an ongoing discussion at buildings, asking for identification, knowing who's there and what their business for being there is. And we balance that with how do we stay this friendly, engaged, community place for parents to come and go and also protect safety. So visitor management has been on our forefront and continues to be in the research as something to keep an eye on. And the other one kind of goes together, staff supervision, excuse me, and situational awareness. Security experts tell us that our number-one preventative measure is to train the adults that are at the school to stay aware. If it doesn't look right, if it doesn't feel like, check into it. Give Laverne a call. Call the Ed Center. Watch the comings and goings of folks. If someone's not where they're supposed to be and that the more the adults are paying attention to situations, that's probably our best preventative measure. And that when they see something that's amiss, they know the protocol to follow. And we feel strongly, it's a continued dialogue, but we have the protocols and processes in place. Let me talk a little bit about drills. Okay, this is when you practice. We expect people to do things in crisis, and we know that adults as well as students need to practice those drills. So fire drills are required once a month in the state of Kansas. And our schools do those very well. And they use a district radio, and they call those in, and we keep track. Tornado drills need to happen three times a year. We like two of those to obviously be during tornado season. And then lockdown drills are not required by the state of Kansas, but we ask that a lockdown drill be done once each semester. And I'm going to talk a little bit more, this last bullet, used tonight as an opportunity to talk a little bit about a particular protocol in that we're going to be enhancing our lockdown protocol. protocol. Lockdown being that should there be an active shooter coming into a building, that our staff know how to lock down their kids in their classroom, I'm gonna spend a minute here or so talking about, we're gonna start rolling out to staff right after the winter break, mainly to our principals first, our staff and our parents. An enhanced lockdown protocol called ALICE, and a number of us have been trained and will continue to train staff. It's a comprehensive program, and it's not new, but what it really does is gives our staff options, that our staff in charge and supervising students have options on what they can do to keep themselves and their students safe. In our past lockdown procedure, you lock your classroom door and you kind of huddle and hide in a corner. In ALICE, I'll walk you through it really quick, the really current best practice is that staff need to feel comfortable they have a number of options. Lockdown's one of them, so let me walk you through what those are. ALICE is an acronym, not surprised, and it's not an educational acronym, it really is a safety, security acronym, so we quickly adopted it, it was a cute name, but alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuation. I'll give you quick details, and we'll have more information as we start to kind of roll out this initiative in the district. Alert is getting good lockdown notification. If I'm a teacher, busily, actively teaching a classroom, how do I get the information that something's going on in my building? PA systems, classroom phones, we have the technology in place, so really, it's not really a step-by-step process, but one of the options that staff has is how they're alerted to crisis situations going on in their building, and they're getting really good information so they can make good decisions. One of the options staff has is to lock down their classroom. Okay, and I'll talk a little bit about adding locks in our district, but they can lock the door, and they can gather their students together, turn out the lights. They also, in ALICE, talk about, you can also barricade a door, that you have an option to pull a bookcase over and do some other things, and so that's built into this protocol. Inform is another piece of ALICE that says, not only should you get information once that something's going on, you should get ongoing live information as a classroom teacher, what's happening, okay? That might be continued information that the crisis is happening in the West Gym, okay? Because then you have different options if you know what's going on in a different place in the building. That hasn't always been our lockdown protocol. So, we'll be talking about that importance of communication throughout a critical incident. See, for counter, is this is the worst-case scenario, okay? And this is the stuff that gets hard to talk about, and hard to talk about when we're talking about students and kids. One of the options staff would have, should the worst-case scenario happen and they are face-to-face with this critical incident or active shooter in their classroom, at that point, hiding's probably not the best idea, right there in the corner. And it talks about counter, do something, make a distraction, throw something. We'll be talking a lot more about what that is and who that's appropriate for. Is that appropriate for kindergartners, first graders, second graders? Probably not. If I'm in high school, there's some different options students of that age have. Then the last one is evacuation, and I think that's probably the biggest difference in a lockdown, okay? If you were to ask teachers even nationally, can you, if you need to run in lockdown? No, 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 they'll say lockdown means stay, lockdown, okay? But if you're getting good information and good alerts, and you know the safest thing is to get you and your class out and run, we need to give the staff really the ability and the accountability and the freedom to do that. And so, that's really probably the biggest change in our protocol. So, again, there'll be lots of information. Tonight really is the first kind of rollout, wanting you guys to know about it. We think it's gonna take good communication, lots more information. Our initial feedback from some staff that have been trained is, this makes sense, that they have a variety of options to keep students and themselves safe. In terms of safety and security, in terms of our facilities and equipment, certainly we had an incredibly supportive community that supported a 2013 school bond, and in a large chunk of that, over thirty-two million dollars was dedicated to safety and security initiatives, so I want to update you a little bit on some of those pieces. Again, some of those things were already in motion as a district, and this really allowed us to accelerate that pace. We are doing the final completion of the schools that had classrooms without doors, that we think classrooms that have a door that can be shut is a natural and needed safety feature. This summer, we were able to go through and make sure that all of our classroom and other learning environments had the ability to lock from the inside. We had many doors, as many districts do nationally, where you'd have to go outside with a key to lock a classroom door, and in a crisis, there's not time for that. So, we've gone through, and all of our classroom doors have thumb locks that can be locked from the inside. We're still in that process, there's some other learning environments, maybe some office spaces that we need to still add those locks. We're really right now waiting for locks to come in, because there's a kind of a national need for that, those mechanisms. And so, as soon as they come in, we're continuing to add them to places, but all of our classrooms and our staff, we're very appreciative of our ability to do that very quickly. We have continued our restricting access to our building, I call that the visitor management piece. Certainly with this bond, we're gonna be able to start this January with, I think, the first six schools of twenty, and we're gonna complete twenty elementary schools, we're able to bring those administrative offices to the front and add in our pinch points. And our bond dollars were able for us to accelerate that process that we'd been doing and knowing that was a good practice. We continue to have our front entrance monitoring systems and cameras and buzzer systems. We are right now piloting some new technology to update those systems that seem like we just got them, but they're five, six years old now, and that technology's improved dramatically. Mr. Parker?
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
In terms of those camera systems, right now, we have three schools that were piloting some different types of cameras. They give us a better picture, the screen's larger, and also, I'll talk a little bit about some different cameras that we're adding to all of our buildings. But the feedback so far from staff as they're piloting these, it's a clean picture, you can really see who's there, you can really see an identification badge now held up, and there's comfort to better identifying the person, again, that's wanting to gain access to the building. And the great majority of the time, they're supposed to be trying to access, they're dropping off for lunch, they're bringing the forgotten gym sneakers, they're volunteering, there are these partners volunteering in our schools. And so, we've been analyzing that. We want to use our money wisely, and we also want an effective system that's gonna work for us for a number of years that really meets our staff needs. So, Reliance leading that task force and getting some great feedback from the pilot schools. Does the system work? When does it work? How does it work? Do you need it to do something differently? And so, that will start with these construction projects, the twenty buildings, starting to add those new updated systems. We're also starting with these projects, looking at some laminated glass at entrances, different than what we've done in the past, that in fact, our current system, if something should bust through a window, the past practice was for those glass to fall into little pieces that no one would get hurt from, okay? But in fact, going through the glass, the whole glass came out. The new system's a laminated glass, like a film between the glass panes, that if, should you go through it, it would slow it down and it wouldn't remove the glass, it would remain as a barrier. It's not bulletproof, but it would slow things down, possibly change the trajectory of bullet. Again, best practice in terms of entrance and to be looking at those kind of things, so built into kind of our ongoing construction. As we said in the bond presentations, adding some interior and exterior cameras, and being very strategic in that, where do we need them, what's our purpose for them, when should you have cameras on and when should you not, and who's gonna monitor them? Given our number of buildings, it's something we're taking very seriously, but trying to be systematic, you know? We don't need to add tons, but we need to add enough, and we need them to do the right thing, and we need them to do that. And so, we're continuing to also pilot some different camera placements along with those front entrance pieces. We are looking at, starting with Elementary 35, and then also new construction, electronic door releases, and bear with me as I try and describe this a little bit. So, currently, you buzz at the front door and picture Elementary School, you buzz at the front door, we ask who you are and why you're coming in in a really lovely invitational way, okay? And then, should they pass muster, we buzz them in, and they get into the vestibule, okay? Then, once they're in the vestibule, they have access to our office. Our new system will allow, once they enter the vestibule, the person at the desk has some time there to see them again, now a second full view of them, to determine if they're okay to now come into the office. If there's a hesitation, something doesn't feel right, we're gonna add some door releases, it actually would then lock that door in, and they would in fact be locked in the vestibule, okay? We expect most folks to come in, and in fact, that is Mrs. Martin, come on in, but should there be something, again, remember this surveillance, this staff awareness, that doesn't feel good, they would have the ability with a push of a button to again, lock that door. Let's say they come on in the office, and they're suddenly maybe behaviorally showing some signs of agitation, or in fact, they get violent there in the office, they'll also have the ability then to lock the office to the rest of the building door, okay? So, we've got what we're kind of calling multiple stop points, yes?
In that regard, so the staff member has to manually do something to lock the door?
They do.
Why won't the doors remain locked, and then the staff member release the lock to let them through? Because, you know, and I appreciate this presentation, thirty-two million dollars, we have to make sure that we're doing a good job of this and there's no gaps.
You bet.
So, I would see if an intruder comes in and an intruder gets violent, hurts someone, that person is unable to lock the door. Why don't we have them locked to start with?
Remember, our outside doors are locked to start with.
Talking about the door from the office to the building.
So, once you come in, you know, I think the opinion right now, and again, it's something we're continuing to analyze, I think the opinion right now is we have a large amount of traffic coming in, okay? And so, I mean, you would be constantly, but so, we're already buzzing them in once, so we've got the stop point to come in, and we feel like, in terms of best practice, we have stopped, we've seen them, we've seen identification. We have another second chance to look again, but we've, at this point, aren't locking them out of that vestibule in, but have the option if needed.
And that makes me somewhat uncomfortable, and I would like to see another study, report, information, documentation, somebody to say, "That's a good practice." It just makes me nervous, if somebody comes in and starts shooting, they're in the building and they're gone, and we don't have the capability, that person is unable to lock the door.
You bet.
I think the door should be locked to start with.
We'll bring back some information about why that's been the recommendation at this point, about having multiple opportunities, and yet, you know, we run the risk, we've talked about, and I think Ms. Parker and I have talked about this too, we want safe schools and we don't want fortresses. We want families coming and going, but we do need to make sure that what we're doing makes the most sense, so we can bring back some information.
And the last thing we want is for somebody to say, "Well, why didn't you do that?"
You bet.
You know, "That's a gap, and we didn't think about or we didn't close that gap." And frankly, I would really, I'm really serious about this, I want to hear another report as to why we would be leaving that door unlocked.
Okay.
Can I just, not really piggyback on that, but add, you know, most people I don't think are gonna come in guns blazing, but someone might look a little suspicious, and so I want to make sure that staff is properly trained to actually keep that door shut, not to think, "Oh, it's okay, it'll be okay." And then also to know that they'll be backed up by administrators, because I've had phone calls from parents who weren't happy that, you know, "My kid's been here for three years, and they're still asking for ID when I come in that door."
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Amy.
Oh, there we go. I've had complaints from parents who aren't happy that they've been going to a school for years and they still have to put their driver's license up every time they come in, and so I think we'll get a lot more of that, especially if somebody, if something doesn't feel right and they just decide to lock the door on them, and they're standing in the vestibule, and maybe they're having a bad day, so they look upset. When they do finally get allowed into the building, you know, you don't want them tearing into your receptionist, so I want to make sure that staff understands that if they decide to keep somebody out, they will be backed up by their administrators.
And I think regardless, again, more information about, do you lock them to start or do you lock it when concerned? We're gonna, I mean, all this is gonna require, and that's really why I had training and personnel first, how do we do that? How do we make sure we're not discriminatory?
Right.
In how we do that? How do we let parents know? You get phone calls, we hear probably daily from volunteers, in today's weather, when you were sent back to your car to grab your driver's license, it's inconvenient. And we'll talk a little bit about, and I think lots of the mantras, is preventative safety is not very convenient at times, and so, we need to ask all these questions. Staff training is gonna be so important, it has been with the front door, you know? And they're great now, because if I go out to a building, they're always like, "Hey, need ID," which I love, you know? And I've gone back to my car once to get it happily for them, so it's a great point, regardless of where we lock out and where we release them.
I think this is a learning process, an education process for us as a staff and as a board, and as building administrators and the community. How many of us like to go to the airport and go through, check? But, how many of us would go to the airport and get on an airplane where nobody was checked? None of us would. So, it's an inconvenience, but we have to understand that it's an inconvenience of safety, and if I have to show my driver's license, I have to show my driver's license, it's safety. We just can't let people walk in our buildings willy-nilly and not know who they are, and the public has to understand it, so if a parent, I had the same complaint, I said, "Well, which would you prefer? Which would you prefer?" And by and large, I say, "Oh, yeah, you're right, we really, I would prefer to go to the airport and get on the airplane and not have to go through the screening, but I don't want to do that. I want to be safe when I get on that plane." So, and it's the same thing, we want our kids safe in these schools, and we want to make sure that everybody comes in that school is gonna provide for the safety of our kids. So, I don't want to apologize for this to the public.
And in all fairness, we gave great calls from parents thankful that we asked for their ID.
Yeah, we don't have to apologize or make excuses for this. This is about those kids being safe and not taking any chances and no gaps, none, the best we can do.
Agreed. And we'll bring back, Mr. Parker, some more information about the decision about multiple release points on doors coming in. Let me also talk about, in terms of other pieces of equipment, and this is something Aletha really has been ahead of the game on, in terms of, our campuses all have what we call campus radios, the ability from staff across our large campuses to talk to themselves. And as I showed you in the ALICE protocol, having real-time, ongoing information in any sort of critical incident really becomes such an important part of the process, and so, Laverne really led this back in 2008 with us having tools on teachers and administrators to talk as needed throughout buildings. And then we also have district radios that allow any building to contact us, Laverne, a variety of us have radios, to immediately let us know of ongoing situations. And I will tell you, it's used daily. We have a power outage, we have police activity nearby, because oftentimes, the school knows first, and they let us know, and then our protocols and practices go into place. And really, as I talk to other jurisdictions, our proactive use of communication devices such as that really has us ahead of the game, and Laverne's on us all the time about radios and making sure they're current, and the best batteries and all those kind of pieces, and I could give you multiple examples of where the radios have really made the difference in timing for support to get out to buildings as they needed, in critical incidences and power outages, where, you know, it's a significant event going on at the building. One of the pieces also that we'll be adding is more keyless access points. Public safety, the police, particularly the Aletha Police Department and Fire Department asked us specifically days following Newtown, we said, "What keeps you up at night? What do we need to do?" And one of the pieces they asked was that they need to be able to get into our building from whatever direction they come to it, okay? All patrol cars have a key to our buildings, so they have the ability to get in, but we didn't necessarily have key access points at any side, and so, that will be our new initiative, that all of our buildings will get added to them, especially during these construction phases, they'll have a keyless access point at any direction.
How soon would that be in place?
You know, we'll be starting now with 35, and then I think the new construction that's gonna be starting in January, and then we'll have to go back and retro through other existing buildings.
Then all police officers and public safety people would be, would know that that would be the access point.
Correct. And they know that now, I mean, and they utilize, and we encourage, we love the police in our buildings, and they go in at night and run training activities and check on things, because we want them very comfortable with our facilities. So, they're comfortable accessing it with their key card, but should there only be one side of a building they could get to, given the critical incident, we wouldn't want it to be the side without a keyless entry point. And so, we're feeling very good about that particular piece, and again, we thank the police for bringing that to our attention, and was something we could take. Another piece, strategic exterior lighting, where to have lights, when to have it be dark. Motion detector lights, it's a darkened area in the back, but should someone come near at night, a motion detector light would come on, in terms of best practice, very much a deterrent, and some of those pieces, some of the pieces we're still analyzing, and we talked about it in the bond presentations, this concept of a school-wide panic alarm system, and I think I talked to you guys about it at some point, where with the touch of a button or something, we would have simultaneous communication to 911 and through the PA system, and then also to the district office. And we're analyzing those, those are expensive systems, we want to make sure they're doing what we believe they are. Do we have that capacity in our current phone and PA systems? Maybe we do. And what's the information and research out there about the need for this particular device? So, we're still in the analyzing, haven't chosen a device, haven't chosen how we'll use it yet, and something we're being very systematic in determining what's gonna be best. And will something be different at an elementary from a 2,000-student high school? We suspect there probably will be some differences. The last piece I want to hit on is just the communication that kind of fits in with our personnel. Our ability to communicate in a crisis, our ability to communicate about our protocols and practices to our community, so they continue to know how important this is to us, I think has been a huge piece of our general crisis management in this district. We get updates from our manager in safety and security daily, what's going on in the community, weather alerts, stranger danger alerts, power outages in local businesses, that is part of his sole focus is to make sure that anyone that needs that communication has that. And if you know Laverne Fields at all, he takes that very seriously, and we get great and frequent communication from him on ongoing pieces going on. We have lots of kind of critical incident communication protocols. If there's a critical incident in a building, we have a protocol in place for how Laverne gets notified, how I get notified, when John Williams, the SRO sergeant, gets notified, when senior leadership gets notified. It's a pretty seamless process, because communication becomes incredibly important in critical incidents. Again, I mentioned that all our plans and processes and protocols are now available on Dropbox and iPads, and so, you don't have to run into the office and find your manual to decide what to do in a crisis. Our communications department has been key throughout this. One of the things we've learned in a critical incident, our parents want to be informed and immediately, okay? And understandably, we have their children in our guardianship, and they need good information and as soon as we can get it to them. Technology's been our friend with this, except we have to go slow enough to make sure the information we're pushing out is accurate and not causing panic, and helps them to know what to do next. And Maggie and Laverne have worked together, and we really have a nice protocol for at what point we send out a City Watch, at what point the principal sends out an additional voicemail. And we've gotten some nice feedback, unfortunately, with some current critical incidents, that we're much more timely in pushing out information, and we get more and more information out to our families and community as we become aware of it. And we feel really good about that and thank our communications department for that. Again, we are also making our schools practice using those radios. It's kind of like fire drills, that we need to practice it, so when it happens, or a tornado drill, or a lockdown, there'll be at least a practice. We have to get our administrators practicing using a district radio, so we have them call in all their drills to the student services office, one for tracking and accountability for us, but also get someone One, for tracking and accountability for us, but also get someone used to using a large kind of complicated district radio. So all our administrators are very comfortable. And again, we have classroom phones in our district and we have kind of state-of-the-art PA systems. There's some communication things that have been in place in our district for a long time that really play a big role when we're talking safety and security. And then the last thing, and then I want to open up two questions for you guys. I've talked about this before and I can't make a kind of a bigger mention of it. We are incredibly lucky, school district, about the partnership we have with our local public safety officials. They care about the safety of these students and our staff as much as we do, and they're in constant communication with us. The Police Department in Lath, Lenexa, Overland Park, I had a chance to sit down with some folks from the Sheriff's Department. We came in as a Johnson County group to talk about if something happens in the Shawnee Mission School District, how do we find out about it soon enough to make some decisions? And so I've been so impressed with the relationships with public safety. The Fire Department, of course, the same great relationship. Anybody can pick up the phone and they'll engage with us. Johnson County itself, in terms of the Sheriff's Department, the emergency management folks have been critical experts for us when we go to them and have questions and are just so willing to help us. And then Kansas, State of Kansas has the Center for Safe and Prepared Schools. Dr. Bob Hall still works for that group, continues, we let them do lots of trainings here so we can take advantage of the proximity, and they continue to put out great information and we continue to take great advantage of that information. So kind of a 10,000-foot-high view of lots of stuff going on, just to keep you updated, but I'd be happy to take questions. Questions?
I have some, but I don't want to. Do we want to do our comfort break first?
Are your questions going to be lengthy?
I may.
Why don't we take?
I'll come back to our original conversation. $32 million, and our whole bond issue was, we touted the bond issue that $32 million was going to go for safety and security of our schools. And heaven forbid that for some reason we missed something in this spending this $32 million, because they're gonna say, the public is gonna say, why didn't you think of that? So my question is, and this is also for my fellow board members to consider, and I really appreciate what you've done, Dr. Dugan, and our staff and Laverne Fields, and I'm not disparaging your work in any way, shape, or fashion. You've done a wonderful job and brought us to this point in time, but I want to make sure that we're not missing any gaps. Should we, have you considered or looked at or considered using any kind of outside? And I see that we've got the Lath Police Department in Johnson County, anybody just specifically dedicated to our school district, sitting down with us and saying, okay, have you thought of this? Have you thought of this? How about this? How about this? Have we missed, are we missing anything? And what my suggestion is, is that we would consider maybe using an outside consultant. We did that on our financial software, we do that on a lot of other things that we do, get outside expertise to come to us and say, have you thought about this? And that's a proposal that I'm concerned about, making sure that we're optimizing the $32 million and we don't miss anything. So have we thought about an outside consultant to do that?
We are currently using, and we started with our camera project and our monitoring, and then we've continued. TED Systems, they were recommended through Hollis and Miller in terms of people who's dedicated to pub schools and safety and security. So they understand school systems. And also, a gentleman by the name of Mike Bettis has been an expert, someone we're working with, Rita, on a regular basis. And we've expanded the variety of subjects we're covering. So we reviewed pinch points, the multiple release opportunities, all of these, he's been part of that discussion, and he's provided lots of information. He'll be someone we use when we bring back Mr. Parker some information about why not always lock the vestibule, because he's been part of our discussion. So we felt the same way as you did when we went to our public safety folks, because they have a certain expertise. Security's a different expertise than public safety, and so TED Systems has added that level of expertise to our discussions. Certainly Rita and myself and Laverne don't believe we know all of this. And so we have been doing what I think you're proposing, is making sure we have someone else looking at these decisions we're making.
Then I would just like to say, if we felt like we needed some other consultation or another consultant or any, another type of information, I would hope that we would be certainly not reluctant to go do that.
We wouldn't hesitate to bring that in. We talk pretty regularly that we don't put a price on safety. We need to come up with it in some manner if we need that consultation. But again, there are so many ways we're checking with outside folks because we're educators. We want to teach the kids in the classroom. We're not used to designing systems. The task force that was put together in Johnson and Miami Counties, sheriffs, Police Department, FBI, KBI, Secret Service, I mean, everybody was there, the notebooks like this, but our local police took all those strategies, narrowed them down for us, met with us. I mean, we are looking to everybody that we can that will talk to us. And again, this consultant that we have used on a limited basis at this point, but we're doing more of that. We sent her to a training. We wanted to hear firsthand, I mean, more than just Erin, there were others that went with you, a national training to get the latest. Bob Hall with the State Group that she mentioned are a great resource for us at the very latest. Again, we're searching everywhere we can to make sure we're spending the money wisely and doing it in an appropriate way.
I appreciate you saying that, because I and we agree with you that this keeps us all awake at night, making sure we haven't missed something that had we only. And so it's a constant conversation and we're constantly checking with folks. And I'll be the first, and if not Dr. Barry, that if we need someone else to help us, we're gonna ask for that. We're gonna need to. It's complicated. We feel good about the decisions we're making and we keep checking along the way. As you can imagine, we have been over and dated with vendors, folks that want to sell us all sorts of safety and security things. And we're trying to manage that, because what if they have the secret and we've missed it? So there's lots of information we're sifting through and we do need others to help us.
Being educators, we are trainable, obviously, and so we like the things where we can go get somebody trained. And the latest one that's coming out, just after the first of the year, is that you can send people to be trained how to evaluate your own schools, to go around and look at spots. I mean, that's the kind of training we like, because not only is it efficient, but we can learn and pass it on to others.
Who's going to be going to that?
We haven't named who yet, but.
Okay, I'm sorry.
A team of administrators is helping. It's the security through environmental design piece that's a certification, then you can also do a threat assessment. Laverne was also in Maryland and went through an entire Johnson County Emergency Management, and he went with the Johnson County team and went through days of a training in terms of protocols and practices. So we continue to seek outside assistance.
We'd like to start to send board members, if we could, to the training.
Speaking of board members, I think we'll take our comfort break now and come back at 7:05, and then if board members have additional questions, we can come back to Dr. Dugan after we do our recognitions and public.
And Coach, I didn't know if you wanted to make any brief comments at all.
It's been an amazing year for us and we just, it was more than we expected once we got there. And then once it kind of got rolling, it was like what we'd wanted and what we'd worked for all season long. We really appreciate all the people that came out and supported us. Dr. Barry was there. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we're just, we're still flying right now, so thank you.
We always like to have our family stand to be recognized as well, so a round of applause for our parents.
That looked nice.
We had another proud moment for Lath East as we honor Senior Natalie Alton. Natalie, if you could come forward, along with Assistant Principal Craig Taylor and Band Director Jeff Smichael. Natalie recently was named to the 2013 Macy's Great American Marching Band as a student representative from Kansas. This is the 87th anniversary of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade held in New York City. Natalie, who plays the clarinet, was selected based on her musical ability and past achievements from a pool of thousands of students from more than 14,000 high schools across the country. What an outstanding accomplishment. And Natalie, is your family here as well? We'd love for them to stand and be recognized. Finally, tonight we will celebrate the district's United Way campaign. For the sixth year in a row, the district raised more than $100,000 thanks to the efforts of the five-person United Way Committee. Would the following United Way Committee members please come forward? Corbin Trimble from Bentwood Elementary, Lane Green, and Nancy Cheatham from the Education Center. We also have two members of our committee, Beth Eskel from Lath North High School and Becky Verbus from Indian Trail Middle School, who couldn't be here tonight, but we wanted to recognize them as well. This dedicated group provided the impetus to more than 4,000 Lath staff to raise $104,560.56 for this year's United Way campaign. The district's United Way rep confirmed that yet again, the Lath Public Schools had the most successful school district campaign in the entire region. No small endeavor and your efforts are much appreciated. Thank you for all you do. And that concludes our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Maggie. So in addition to the wonderful community partners that we have, it looks like the employees and people within our own district work very well to support those in need. One thing that I neglected to say in our very brief comfort break is that I hope to visit the table at the end of the hallway or Santa's elf to my right. If you are at all interested in donating to the Children's Shoe Fund, which is sponsored through the Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund, we would like to make sure in this cold weather that every child in our district has a warm pair of shoes to wear. So those of you who feel so inclined, please do so on your way out or see Ms. Elf here to my right. All right, public comments. At each regular board meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. And I understand that we do have one speaker so far this evening, Ms. Steer.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Bonnie Steer and I live at 12236 South Crest Drive in Lath, zip code 66061. And as a collective voice for the families living within one-third mile of Ravenwood Elementary School in the Cedar Brook subdivision, we wish to express our concern regarding the proposed Millbrook School boundary changes. We appreciate the information provided to us by Erin Dugan and other Lath School District personnel. We do understand the need to be flexible and of the positive change that will occur when Ravenwood Elementary School is provided some enrollment relief. However, the new boundary changes, many of our children will be denied the reasonable opportunity to walk to school if we do attend Millbrook. We would suggest that the alternative option be selected for the boundary change to allow current students and future students to attend Ravenwood and to continue to walk to school. We really do feel that this is a common sense solution. One of the reasons given to us for not recommending the alternate option is that it would split up a subdivision. However, if you look at the Hunters Creek subdivision, there are neighbors beside each other who would be going to different schools with options A, B, and C. It appears that the neighborhoods will be split with about any arrangement that you choose. Communities, especially in Lath, are really built around the schools. This is an important factor in your driving mission of children first. It's the proximity of a school to our homes that builds and deepens our community ties, while the name of our subdivision is truly secondary. Many of us excluded in these new boundaries live much closer to Ravenwood Elementary than many of the residents that are still included in the Ravenwood Elementary School boundary. The boundary decision will also come into play if we or our neighbors try to sell our homes. Our homes will be less attractive to buyers. Instead of a short walk to an elementary school that we can see from our house, they will be forced to drive to another school. This is not a selling point. It devalues our home and it does not promote a strong community. Having a neighboring school needs to be just that. It needs to be a neighboring school. It needs to be where the neighborhood kids go, where home values can remain stable, and where community and children really do come first. With these facts in mind, we urge the board to consider the alternative option for both current and future Lath children. Thank you very much.
Coming.
Pardon?
Thank you for coming.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Daniel.
We will be addressing this decision later in the evening. We may try to move it up earlier in the actions items. We'll see how it goes. Are there any other individuals who would like to address the board at this time? Seeing none, then, I'm going to ask the board if board members have additional questions for Dr. Dugan. Should we bring her back up and grill her some more? Excellent. Back to the podium you go.
I'm gonna list my name and address.
We know it.
You know how to find me.
That's right. And I make light of this, but in all seriousness, we need to ask all the questions that we want to, safety and security. While it would be ideal that we would say, education of our students is our only priority, that's just simply not realistic these days. So please ask the questions that you need to at this time.
Great. Are you done, Harlan?
Yes, I'm finished. Thank you.
Thank you. I would say, I would like to second what Harlan was saying as far as the pinch points. I don't think they're pinch points if the door isn't locking automatically. So I really, really echo what he says on checking that out. Okay, absolutely. I know it takes extra band hours and a lot more button pushing, maybe more carpal tunnel, but it's probably worth it, you know? And then if you go back and visit the Alice, the I standing for inform, can you talk a little bit about who informs? I know this is just supposed to be a general overview, but Sandy Hook, for example, you know, the office would not have been able, from what I understand, to be informing anyone, anything. So how does this work on informing? It's a great question, and I'm gonna just echo what Dr. Barry said. We're gonna be offering lots of Alice training and it's very interesting, and I'm gonna make sure you guys have information if you're interested in hearing some of this. So it's a great question. That's what's so important about the I in inform. It isn't about just the front office, if they can, saying through the PA system, lockdown, lockdown, lockdown. It is about every adult in the building or students informing others of what's going on. So you stay informed by your listening, unfortunately, maybe for gunshots, for breaking glass, for screaming, you're watching for running, and you're informing through the PA system you have access to in your classroom or the telephone. So if it can be the front office and they can utilize the PA system or a bullhorn or their campus radios, the district radios, they'll do that. Remember, our campus radios are throughout the building with different administrators that hopefully in a high school, they're not all in the front office, they're all around the building. So it is just that. It is, there shouldn't be one piece of communication that would let a building know what to do. That would be every adult's responsibility to make sure that they stay informed and that they're informing others throughout a critical incident. And that's just something to train on, because that hasn't been the practice nationally. I mean, you wait for the principal to tell you, this is a lockdown, everybody lockdown. And that may not always be the scenario. So, but lots and lots more information coming out on all that. And as we're building, like for example, the pinch points, are we being very future-sighted on possibilities? Heaven forbid that someday we need metal detectors. I mean, the kind of foundational safety and security that we're putting in place, is it as future-sighted as we can be at this point for augmenting it in the future should the need arise? I'll try my best, and if I don't, I can certainly get more information for you on that. I think the way that the front offices have been moved and the pinch points leave us flexibility. If we have to. If we have to add something, like you said, God forbid, a metal detector, again, those can be standalone devices and wired into our technology and lots of those pieces. So I don't think any of the changes will hold us to a certain security concept. Certainly, what we've been learning is that the best security is that which you can amend over time, add other components to, and so you wanna look for any of your security features to have that built-in flexibility, to add pieces to them, because each of our buildings is so different. One elementary needs motion detectors one place and one doesn't. One needs certain security lights in the front, and one really needs them in the back southeast corner. And so all of the systems for all the buildings have to be flexible enough for us to customize them per building, and like you said, customize them for needs we don't even know about yet. Because 10 years ago, we didn't know we'd be needing to lock the front door and then maybe the vestibule door and the office door. So all of our systems need to be flexible to address that. It's a great question.
And one final question. Safety also includes natural disasters, and I know we, I don't know that we discussed any of that, but is FEMA being consulted, or, you know, for tornadoes, natural disasters, earthquakes? That's part of this platform as well, right?
It is. One of, the training that I mentioned that Laverne just went to in Maryland with the Johnson County team on emergency management, its sole focus was a two-day scenario on a simulation of a tornado hitting Johnson County. And how do we respond, and what are our practices and protocols, and how we would do a county-wide, because oftentimes, weather disasters hit large areas. And so that continues to be something that Laverne's played a really key role in tweaking our protocols. We continue, and it's likely gonna be an area where we're gonna use some outside expertise to talk about our sheltering spots at each of our buildings. Are they optimal? Do we need to consider something else? Right now, most experts have directed us to Johnson County Emergency Management. Those are the folks that know the most about sheltering in public buildings, and we'll be working with them to kind of assess each of our buildings and our sheltering locations. So I didn't mention it tonight, so I'm glad you did. That it's a big piece and certainly would be a critical incident if it occurred.
Thank you. I lied, I have one more question. In one of the last slides, you mentioned, you know, our partners, Olathe Police Fire. We also have Overland Park and Lenexa as part of the critical team, right? Or are they secondary?
And they've been at the table with us a number of times, because so many of our schools are in the Olathe Police Department jurisdiction. They're calling us and at the table all the time. But we, when we met right after Sandy Hook, for example, Lenexa, Olathe, and Overland Park were represented, and then the counties did a nice job of pulling all of us together a variety of times. Dr. Berry mentioned the large task force was all of the local areas, which a lot of us have connected then and stay in contact. Safety and security managers in all the districts are talking to each other constantly now. I mean, that level of communication has really changed in the last year. So absolutely to include those other entities.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Bren?
I just have a couple of questions. One, you had mentioned the, starting with the new elementary school with implementing all these changes. What is the timeline, and what is the completion date, and how long would this take to get completed?
For the 20 schools and the pinch points?
Yes.
I'm gonna let John address that, if you will, just so it's accurate. I know that we'll start with the first six schools in January to start to move forward, but let me have him-
One question, the TED System you mentioned.
TED Systems, which is a security consultant.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
We're still working on the fine details of that plan, but some of the components would happen as you do the pinch point. The laminated glass has gotta go into each one of those. But as far as retrofitting, where the cameras go, that's in that H facility piece that we're scheduling quietly. We'll try to do as much as we can upfront, but it is a three-year process for all the H facilities. If you can imagine trying to get into each building, limited times when you, when kids are not there, some things can be done with kids. So right now, we're working with construction manager to get that timeline in place, and we'll do everything we can to pull those towards the front, but some things may take multiple years.
I understand, thanks.
Dr. Dugan, I have one question. I know one thing that we have at the university is a system called Alertus, which is notification that is in all of the departments within the hospital and the academic part of the medical center, which are right by the front office, that go off and inform of tornado watches, tornado warnings, if there would be a strange person in one of the buildings, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one mechanism the university uses on our campus. Is that, I guess I'm interested in, is, do you use your radios to do an all-district-at-one-time type communication?
A couple of things, and this is Laverne, and I hear his voice talking to me. We don't have one system, we have multiple systems. In a district this size and close to 50 buildings, which rely on a variety of things. One of the things we've been paying attention to is what's called mass notification. How do you mass notify folks? I mentioned that we're ahead of many with a district, we call them district radios, and they're just the big police radios, and I'd have John hold one up. But that's our main mass notification system. They're reliable, they're in every front office, and they're kind of a well-watched device. They're always on. Weather alerts, stranger danger, power outages, and Laverne and Student Services report that out, because I may not have power at, I may have power at my school, but the local school nearby doesn't, and I may be the reunification point for that school. Or I saw something. And so our current notification system, outside of calling the office or doing emails, and we use all of the above. And so, yes, text messaging, all those systems. And again, and then to our families, which is also that customer we have that's waiting with bated breath to know what's going on. We have examples of their power outages, parents want to know quickly. We've really used our TextCaster and CityWatch systems really successfully. So that's kind of our community mass notification, and currently radios and email are our in-district system for that. And they have worked well for us. It's a great question.
Other board members?
Yeah, if we could go back to ALIS training for just a minute. You mentioned something under counter, and even before you said it, you made the comment that this is, this is where it gets hard to talk about. And we're, and we're talking about training teachers to do different things, and you mentioned even having students participate if it's creating the distraction. Are we going to be training students? And if so, my concern is, are, do we have someone in-house, or are we working with someone to understand the psychological impact on kids? Because we obviously want them to be prepared and to know how to behave in the situation, but we also, you know, and I'm saying something everybody knows, we don't wanna put ideas in their heads. So I just wanna be assured that we're working with experts in how we talk to kids about this as well.
It's a great question, and that's why I qualified this, because there's lots more information, and we need to talk, and we need to reassure people. One of the reasons we've gone with ALIS, because it's a national model, they use developmental psychologists to help understand what kids at what age are ready for what information. What do you practice physically, and what do you talk about? Because really, a physical practice may not work for some, but are you talking about it and rehearsing it verbally? And brainers just would tell you, that has an incredible impact, too, and works well. And so while we've gone with a national organization, there's some other programs, there's a run, hide, fight, you'll hear different acronyms. We've gone with ALIS, one, because it makes sense for schools, it talks more about kids in classrooms and teachers, and the mentality of being in charge of 25 people that are about three feet tall in some situations. So they have the research about how do we approach, how do we train teachers? Because we're empowering them. You're gonna make a decision based on the information you're getting. We won't tell you exactly what to do, and that's a different mentality. And so why we like ALIS is they have the research, are training throughout the nation, and they will help guide us as to, how do you talk to kindergartners about this versus juniors in high school? And I went through a two-day training with them and was sold in about a half hour, with my biggest concern being counter. Do I really wanna train kids to counter an active shooter? That's not what it means. It really means about distractions and running and tossing something potentially. But we have lots of training to do, we're taking a slow approach. We're just gonna be talking to staff right now in our community and you guys through the spring, and we're not gonna even start practicing and involving students till next fall.
Well, I'll emphasize again what she just said. This is extremely well researched, so it's not a case of, this is something that Erin likes as an educator. It's research, it is supported by our local law enforcement and Laverne, it's neighboring districts, again, it's across the country. And again, the reason, I've not been trained yet, but the thing that I liked about it was it's an option. And I give you that scenario that I think I've shared before that talks about Columbine and the tape that plays, that the librarian is yelling at the kids to get under the desk, get under the desk, and it's, I don't know, five minutes or more that they're in there, and there was a door right there that they could have used. So it's to help inform, to give our teachers and our kids options if they could get to safety, to not just hunker down and hope for the best. So that's why we like the system.
The training in February, I will be bringing in the folks from ALIS. We're not bringing them in, actually, they like the police department. We'll be training police officers so that they have the same training and know what we'll do as schools in their jurisdiction. So, and they're excited, and I'll tell you just the power of a board meeting, a parent that left has emailed me during break so excited, because they're involved with Johnson County Community College that is in ALIS, that's their response system, is the ALIS program, and they've had it in place for two years. So we have another local entity that's found it a little different with college-age students. But we feel good about it, yes.
I had another question.
Your time is up.
I just thought of, and that really relates to our planning in the fifth, of the fifth high school. The conceptual ideas that we saw, we could go Monday night, I, it seems like the trend in new high schools is a lot of open space, a lot of glass, which seems to me present, and now we're talking about having rooms that we can lock on the inside, but it seems like we're going away from that, we would be going away from that in a new high school. So as we design the high school, we really certainly need to be aware of security and safety of our kids, and how that's all gonna be handled in what it looks like to be a more open environment.
There are still options within that environment to close those things off, curtains, doors that lock, there's still lots of options. There's some, you know, one opinion expressed to us from consultant is that the glass can be good to see, to have that visibility in terms of what's coming and where to go and that kind of thing. So it's mixed. You know, unfortunately, when we have to talk about this, and I obviously am very limited knowledge, if someone's coming in to do harm, our law enforcement tells us we want as much time to get there as we can, to delay in certain ways, but we're not gonna stop somebody. That's not been proven out.
One of the questions we asked in architect interviews was just that, how you design a high school that's gonna have 2,000 kids and keep in mind all our safety requirements and features and those pieces. So we asked that early in the process, and that'll be part of this. There's information right now that that glass and supervision is only helpful. Okay, so versus some outside glass and that concept of breaking through, watching and supervising students and know who's moving and who's where they shouldn't be, that open supervision should actually make for a safer environment. So, but that'll have to be part of our discussion all along.
Is that it?
I'm finished, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Dugan.
All right. We are at that point in the agenda where we need to do our consent action items, items 5.01 through 5.06. We can certainly approve all of them together, or if someone needs to have something pulled out, let me know now. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve a consent agenda items 5.01 through 5.06.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. McCune.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
We'll move on to our action items, bids, contracts, and agreements. The first one, 6.01, custom casework. Questions or a motion?
I move to approve the low bid from Precision Craft for the custom caseworks for the district.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Spelter to approve the low bid from Precision Craft for the custom casework for the district. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
6.02 is supplemental project management for aging facility projects.
I do have a question about that, because this is based on hourly rates, so if the hours go up, hours go down, does that number change then at that point? Are we tracking that hour by hour, or how is that working?
The hourly rates don't change, but they'll bill on an hourly basis, and we'll check it every month as they bill for it.
And so this is the best estimate that we have at this time?
This is the best estimate.
This many hours?
This is the best estimate based on the current scope of work. And as the scope of work changes, then obviously that estimate will change. But they'll, they'll bill monthly using time sheets as a, as a backup, and then we'll use the hourly rate applied to the time sheets.
So if it goes above this 183, then does that come back to the board to approve that, or is there a flexible part of that that we go to? How does that, how does that work? Do you have a 10%, you know, flex area there or something, or how, what do we usually set in place for that?
We can certainly do anything the board wants. This is a little bit of new territory, we haven't done this in a while. Because of the scope of projects, trying to give Mr. Thomas some help, off the top of my head, I believe we would come up with a percentage at which it would be, we'd report, just like change orders, after the fact, if it exceeds a certain amount, we'd pre-approval from you, so you'd know when we start to trip that point.
And is, and that percentage is, is that something we need to come up with? What that percentage over this would be then?
Certainly. We can bring something back to you.
I would entertain a motion.
With that in mind, I approve to contract with Turner Construction Company for the services of Adam Reed and others to provide supplemental project, project management of aging facility projects at an estimated cost of $183,698 based on hourly rates.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Parker for the supplemental project management for aging facilities projects. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Let's move on to 6.03, the mechanical engineering proposal.
I do have a question. Were there just, were these the only two engineering companies that actually we requested a bid from, or are they the only two that responded to the bid?
These are the two engineers that have provided mechanical services for the school district for the last 15 years, are most experienced with our buildings, and most experienced with this particular type of mechanical replacement in our buildings. So we requested proposals from the two highest qualified engineering firms.
I accept a propos, I make a motion to accept a proposal from BGR Consulting Engineers in the amount of $188,000.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shear, and is it a second by Mr. McCune? To accept the proposal for the mechanical engineering proposal.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Let's move on to 6.04, the Hedge Lane Benefit District. Anyone have questions or comments? Then I would entertain a motion.
I would entertain a motion to approve, to authorize the board president to execute the petition for the benefit district as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Spelter to approve the Hedge Lane Benefit District. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
I was meeting with Cindy Von Velt at the Olathe Public School Foundation this afternoon, and she asked me about item 6.05, the Olathe Northwest Aerospace and Engineering Tension Compression Materials Tester Bid. And I said, yes, we would be discussing that this evening. She was quite excited. All right. So I would entertain any questions or a motion.
And not just a question, but I do wanna thank, because this is a grant, it's not coming out of the school district funds or anything else, this is a grant from the Olathe Public School Foundation for the entire amount. So I mean, I wanna thank Olathe Public Schools Foundation for stepping in and picking up the tab for this and providing this piece of equipment to the aerospace. So thank them again for all of that, uh, help with that. And with that in mind, I guess I would like to make the motion to award the bid to, uh, Instron for $29,757,000 for the Model 3365 Dual Column Test System with Integrated Video Recording and Playback System.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Spelter to approve the bid for the Olathe Northwest Aerospace and Engineering Tension Compression Materials Tester Bid. Ms. Hibs?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thanks again to the foundation, those of you who feel in the Christmas spirit and would like to help the foundation out, I'll just put a plug in for them right now. All right, six dot zero six is less exciting, but it's the white copy paper bid, and I will entertain any questions or a motion.
I would move to award low bid to Contract Paper Group at a carton price of $22.67, representing a savings of $1.44 per carton when compared to the average of all bills presented.
Second.
That was fast, you wanna do that again? I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Spelter to approve the white copy paper bid. Ms. Hibs?
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Last but not least, um, under action items is our Network Electronics Bid, which is a large one. Questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Martin, do you have a question?
Could we get the foundation to pick this one up?
That would be very nice, let's give Cindy a call.
Go ahead.
I move to approve low bid of $550,214.26 to Serious Computer Solutions for Network Hardware for the Technology Support Center and Millbrook Elementary.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Martin and a second by Mr. McCune for the elect, network, excuse me, Network Electronics Bid. Ms. Hibs?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Spelter?
Yes.
It's now time for our other action items, and at the pleasure of the board, I'd like to shift item seven dot zero seven, which is the boundary proposal from Millbrook Elementary, um, which is Elementary 35, from seven dot zero seven, and have that discussion first. Is that agreeable to everyone? All right, and I understand that we have some information from Dr. Dugan. And, uh, board members, you have some additional information in your handouts, just like this?
It's the slides you're about to see, so...
It's the slides, I'm gonna walk you through here. Um, tonight we bring to you as an action item, um, the recommendation that we talked about as a future action item, uh, last month in November, um, with, um, some additional information for your consideration and, uh, in action tonight, so I'll walk you through that and then, um, answer questions as part of your discussion. Um, we continue, uh, to bring to you tonight a recommendation for what we called Option C for the boundaries for Millbrook Elementary, again, it's the area designated in purple, and again was our proposal back in November. Um, and to the right here, I've listed the neighborhoods, uh, that are included in that purple area that would be identified, uh, as the boundaries for Millbrook. Additionally, tonight, sorry, no, that was it, uh, let me do this one first. Additionally, tonight, and you'll see, a little hard to see for the audience, but hopefully on your sheet you can see it, um, we're bringing to you tonight a, a recommendation for your consideration in addition to the identified, uh, purple area for the boundaries for Millbrook, a, a consideration that for these families, and there's a, a grid area, I'd say looks like a really large soccer goal on, on this map, um, we're recommending that, uh, board give consideration to those families living in that area, those are the families one-third of a mile from Ravenwood, um, and we've heard through some community input from, um, a handful of families, their interest in being able to continue to walk, uh, to Ravenwood, uh, we recommend, uh, some consideration given that these families be allowed to transfer, and we would approve a transfer that, for them to remain at, or if they have younger students attend, uh, Ravenwood. About 65 homes are in this particular area that are one-third of a mile from Ravenwood. Uh, we project that that's anywhere between 19 and 33 students, um, that we would then add back to the numbers, um, at Ravenwood, so, uh, we present that to you tonight. Um, again, just looking at the map, some consideration, i- it's not the families right there at Ravenwood, but they are close, um, some of the, just historical information, about third, a little more than 30% of our elementary schools have a similar situation, where families that live, live even less than a third of a mile, live close to 11 of our elementary schools but attend a different school. Um, so it's not, uh, uncommon, um, as we have neighborhood schools and, and dense neighborhoods, and, and we talked in November, Ravenwood is a dense neighborhood, so however we would go in to offer relief, there would need to be a cut at some point. So, tonight we bring you two recommendations, the original Option C that includes, um, uh, the neighborhoods I mentioned, I'll go back to them for you on the slide, and then additionally, consideration given to those families, uh, living a third of a mile from the school, marked in that gridded area, then there's just another viewpoint, um, that we would, they would request a transfer to remain at Ravenwood, uh, and we would approve that transfer from the district level.
So when you say, uh, transfer area, um, do they have to meet the transfer requirements for typical transfers within the, the district, and is this a temporary, like, the person who's living here now, but future homeowners?
Here's what we're recommending, but certainly this can be part of your discussion and consideration, uh, we'd recommend that they would apply through the parent-initiated district transfer, because some families in here may choose to attend Millbrook, okay? Uh, but if they were interested, they would apply through the, the parent-initiated, that parents are initiating their desire to transfer and not attend Millbrook and stay at Ravenwood. Um, and we would approve them uniquely because the board has decided this is an option we're going to give them. So, the unique piece of that that would pass the, the, the policy and how we approve boundaries, uh, how we approve transfers, would be, that would be a decision you guys make tonight, that we would approve those transfer requests. Our recommendation at this point for your consideration is that would be good for the families that are in those homes currently, should they sell their homes in the Cedarbrook neighborhood, and this hits actually a number of different neighborhoods, um, this, but little section, um, that once they sold their homes and a new family moved in, those new families would be Millbrook families, um, and it would, again, keep those boundary lines clean and then not continue to separate, um, neighborhoods.
Can you talk a little bit about, when we look at the, um, boundary map with the high schools, there's several areas where it's overlaid, where there's a school, a high school kind of choice, have we ever done that on an elementary school?
Those are called areas of choice, and so, a- at, at, uh, different boundary points, a Board of Education decided that those areas could choose between one high school or the other. Once they made that choice, that becomes their neighborhood school, should they choose to go somewhere else, they would go through our transfer policy. Um, this is probably the closest we've come in terms of elementary areas of choice.
Yeah, we've never done it for an elementary school.
I'm sorry, Dr. Barry?
We've not done it for an elementary school.
We've done it for middle school, for, uh, junior, junior highs and high schools, but not for elementary.
And at one time, as you'll remember also, we, uh, for junior high or middle schools, uh, we allowed a transition period of a couple years before, uh, something was enacted in terms of a boundary.
So basically, Dr. Dugan, we're talking about grandfathering the families in this area for a transfer to Ravenwood, but not the house.
Correct, a- and the questions come up, and, and we've worked with some lovely folks, including the, the woman that's had a chance to speak tonight, um, and they've been receptive, and they've asked the question.
And, and we, we could make the decision to make that area a boundary of choice, where they could either go to Ravenwood or middle, uh, Millbrook. We could make that decision as well, say, okay, and not grandfather the house, or just make it a, a, an issue where, make it permanent, thank you. Or be permanent.
You would certainly have that, I mean, that, that could be a decision that you could make tonight to say that actually this area is permanently a Ravenwood area, and we'd make that yellow. So it wouldn't be a transfer option, I mean, that could be a decision. Part of the presentation last month would be to say that's not traditionally what we've done in the district, because that splits three different neighborhoods, as defined by neighborhood associations. Um, part of the conversation with folks has been, so what? Yeah, so split neighborhoods, um, a- and we keep talking about clean boundary lines, and, and that doesn't, I mean, that's, it seems almost silly, but really, imagine if you're a real estate agent, and you're selling homes, and you're turning over, and, and this house goes to this school in Cedarbrook, and, but this one goes to Millbrook, and then I got confused, and I did the lane, the road behind that, and what we've learned in a district this size is as clearly as we can communicate to families early in the buying process, their identified school, the better the feedback is we've gotten, and again, we've done this 11 times, where we've said, I know the school's right there, but in order to offer the amount of relief, we need you to go to this school, and once they're at that school, we don't get feedback from them that that impacted their home values, um, or that they've been impacted. Is it harsh now? Does, I mean, we've always talked about, it's an emotional issue for you guys to make a decision on, and our families, um, to, to do, but, um, staff's recommendation is for it to not be permanent, because of the three different neighborhoods impacted and the ongoing issues, I believe, and others believe, that will cause us, and the confusion and lack of clarity in communication, that if you live in Cedarbrook, you attend Millbrook. With the exception of families in this designated area, we've allowed an option of a transfer, if they choose.
Let me ask, oh, go ahead.
Is there oper, is there additional growth anticipated in that area? I'm thinking about, should we choose to make it permanent? Are we shooting ourselves in the foot if there are roughly 20 students now and 120 students in three years? I'm asking if you have those kinds of numbers.
You, we did, we asked Chris Grollup to do the projection. What we know about Ravenwood and that area there, remember densely populated and about built out, so we're not anticipating a big change in development, but we asked him to project out, so we think at most getting close to 36, 40 students, those 65 houses could produce. We think now, we know of now, 20 students in those homes, that we would then allow to put in a transfer request. The potential could grow, um, you know, again, using our formula by per-house, how we project how many students could head towards 40.
And so to make that clear, that it won't expand by any more houses.
Right.
I don't know if that's a soccer goal, I don't, could that be a kidney shape or something?
Semi-circle.
But anyway, it's 65 houses, so that's what Chris is doing, is trying to figure how many kids do we get per household. Currently, it's 20, could grow to as many as 36.
Okay.
And I would say, looking at the map, for Millbrook, it would be a very logical assumption that that will be the school that would experience the most growth, based on the land that's available there. It is not fully built out, is that correct?
Millbrook's... Oh, certainly not, yeah.
So, let me back up, um, the, the map where it says area of choice for the high schools, I, I understood you to say that once the neighborhood has decided, what high school, that that's where they're going?
Once the student decides, remember, individually, the neighborhoods don't decide, so that's an area of choice, so individual students say, I can either go to south or north.
Okay, and then they're committed for their...
And then if they choose north, then that becomes their neighborhood school, 'cause we don't want students going, you know, this year, I think I'm gonna go south, and then this year, I think I'm gonna go to north, so you establish a neighborhood school by your choice you make.
Kasia doesn't allow that.
In terms of athletics, right?
In terms of athletics, right, so sometimes...
And we don't think it's a stable learning environment and some of those things, so once you make that choice, you have the choice, once you make that choice, that then becomes your neighborhood high school, should you wanna change, you'd have to either apply for a program or put in for a transfer.
I think it's a little different in choosing a, a high school, that, because each of our high schools have some programs that are unique to just those high schools, whereas an elementary school has a consistent curriculum across each of the grade levels, so you would not anticipate that, oh, I'm gonna go to this grade school because they have the aerospace engineering tension folder thing that we just bought. Um, you know, so it's a, it's a little different in terms of high school of choice versus, I think, asking about elementary school of choice. The other thing I was gonna say is, Mr. Parker and I both have children of the age who experienced massive growth in the Black Bob area, and I can remember children living a block from Black Bob going to Briarwood, or...
Green Springs.
A block from Black Bob going, crossing Black Bob Street, Road, and going to Green Springs, and it is emotional, and, and we do wanna be respectful, but those students all get outstanding, or received and continue to receive outstanding education in each of those buildings. So, I mean, I just, um, if we allow transfers for these families, um, we always have a transfer policy, so, once these families have, um, moved on to middle school and new families populate that area, they always still have that possibility for transfer, is that correct, going through the regular transfer process?
Going through the regular transfer process.
What concerns me is, is the very, um, tangible reality that this will impact, in my opinion, property values, that, the fact that it, the unknown, will I be able to get into Ravenwood if I apply for a transfer, if I buy in this area? Um, to me, a growing district, I mean, especially with growth pretty well captured in Ravenwood, we kinda have the idea that these 65 houses would have this capacity, and Millbrook is still growing, I would, I would like to see us consider that as a permanent area of choice for an elementary, I know we haven't done it before, but, uh, looking at the map, I think it's a very logical, clean, fiscally responsible way to handle their property values. If I lived there, that's what I would request. I live in an area of our district where my next-door neighbor is Blue Valley, the neighbor across the street is Blue Valley, it's, it's not a neat, tidy, you know, uh, boundary line, and with technology, there's a website, you just go type in the address when you're looking for a home, you know, it tells you what school district, and hopefully Realtors know that, and if not, you know, shame on them. But, uh, I would, I, I appreciate all your work, and we keep saying we've involved the community, involved the community, and I, we're still hearing from the community that this little piece needs some tweaking. I would love to see it be a permanent area of choice.
I'm gonna suggest that we do one thing, and that would be to break the current motion as it is suggested, where we have a motion that includes the change of boundaries for Bentwood, as well as for, um, Millbrook, and so we could vote on Bentwood...
Could we do three? Looking at this, and so this would be a request, is that you do the Bentwood Elementary as one motion and one vote.
Mm-hmm.
Then you do Ravenwood Boundaries as one, uh, motion and one vote, and then this designated area as one motion and one vote, does that make sense?
Well, if we do the designated area as a separate vote, then we'd need to make a decision about whether it's for this group of families or permanent, so it, it might end up needing two votes or one vote, yeah.
But that, but that way, every one of these are gonna be on its own merit, and nobody's feeling pressured saying, well, I'm voting yes for all of these to get it all done, I think it makes sense to break them out individually, and then that way we're, it's a lot cleaner from that standpoint. Sure, and that makes sense, that is, that is making the assumption you're not considering an option to remove it and go back to Ravenwood entirely, I mean, making it yellow, because if that's the case, then you'd wanna not have the first, uh, or the second, when you talked about approving the, the guy, or the boundaries as presented. I agree. That would have to be a different motion if that was part of the... Right. Ravenwood Boundaries as a permanent piece of that, that would be just the second option on there.
Well, and as you pointed out, some of these families may want to move to the other school, and, and to me, we would be, if we go back to Ravenwood, it's kinda limiting that relief option.
Oh, certainly, yeah, and I agree, I think there could be some choice, if, uh, not that you base it on Best Friend, but if Best Friend lives two blocks away, is going to Millbrook, he may decide to, to go ahead and go to Millbrook, but, but those are options, I guess.
So let's start with the proposed boundary adjustment for Bentwood. Do people have questions about that, or can we take that as a separate proposal and get that one done?
Do you want any comments from Dr. Dugan in terms of covering it one more time? I think the Bentwood's pretty clear.
Yeah, just in terms of the recommendation, so we're gonna, we're gonna adjust the Bentwood boundary line to now include the unbuilt yet anticipated apartment complex, Bentwood has the capacity and remutilization to take... Bentwood has the capacity and remutilization to take that on. It's nice to do that now, so that's a known entity for those residents.
I would move to approve the proposed boundary adjustment for Bentwood Elementary as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Felter to approve the proposed boundary adjustment for Bentwood Elementary as presented. Ms. Hitt.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
All right. So, I guess now at this point, we either, we go with either two vote, two options or the second option, which would be, I guess we could discuss whether we are...
Want to do two or three?
Let's, can we find out if any board member is interested in making that slice a permanent part of Ravenwood? Because then we might be able to pass that vote.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Parker raised his hand.
Been on the board for 14 years and Olatha for 34 years. It's always the Olatha School District. And I was in, and we hear the mayor, I mean, anybody who's in economic development or who's in business in the community. We just, Dr. Mary and I were at the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Quarterly Meeting this week. And the executive director said the number one, the number one reason businesses come to Olatha is for our quality of our schools. It's not the Ravenwood School District, it's not the Millbrook School District, it's the Olatha School District. And I appreciate what Ms. Felter said. I would be in favor of making that area a boundary of choice, grandfathering to families. But it would be difficult for me to approve, to make it a permanent, to say, a permanent grandfathering, because at the end of the day, it's the Olatha School District. And I think in the long run, people come here for Olatha, not necessarily for the elementary school. And that would be my preference.
With, in addition to that, Mr. Parker, I agree with you that it is the Olatha School District. I don't know that, and I know that I'm not in a personal position to say that it's gonna up or down your property values. But to your point, it is the Olatha School District that does that. There will be families that are in that, in that location there that are gonna be more than happy and probably want to go to a new school. So, making it permanent from that standpoint, I think is difficult to do. And again, I don't know that, I know I'm not in a position to say that it's gonna change property values. I don't think most of us are gonna be able to say that because of an individual elementary school. And again, if you were to try to make a choice like that, I think that a brand new school and you're going to a brand new school might actually help your property value versus something that's a little bit older. But again, I don't want to put that in the place of saying that it does or it doesn't. I would, I similarly, like you, like the idea of a choice in that area for the, for the current families. But I do think that at some point, especially at an elementary level, we need to prob, we need to have some boundaries and be able to do that. Otherwise, there's gonna be a lot of, I think it's harder to manage it down the road if you don't have a permanent going forward. But giving them a choice at this point, saying if you want to be here or if you want to be there would be a direction that I'd be interested in.
I would say, speaking as someone who owned a home where I could see my child's elementary school, and we sold that home by owner, we didn't have one single family with elementary kids come through our house, you know? So, yes, I think it's a good selling point, but I don't know that it had any impact on the value of my house. Certainly not to the single older woman who bought the house. But I also walked my kids to school every day, and I got so tired of seeing the line of cars going up the street. And so, I think anything that we can do that would help maybe reduce some of the traffic in front of our schools would be helpful. So, I'm really kind of of the mindset to make that a permanent area of choice, just because, yes, it will be maybe an administrative headache keeping track of, you know, we can't be doing this all over town. I agree with that. But I went and I drove this neighborhood and, and really, there are a few people just across the street from this area who can't be happy that we drove the line here. I know it's gotta go somewhere. But anything that we can do to encourage our kids to walk to school, I have to be in favor of.
I would concur, I think, with Harlan and Rick in regards to, I wouldn't want to see it a permanent. I've bought and sold several homes here in Olatha and have never once had the issue as far as the school of choice having an impact on, on properties or property values. Again, I'm not a Realtor, so I don't know that I can really vouch to that point, but I would not like to see it permanent.
Nor would I. While I am totally understanding of your comments, Amy and Lea, I feel, I guess, having been on the boundary or on the board a very, very, very long time and suffered through very, 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 very many boundary changes, that that would be a slippery slope that we might not want to go down. And so, I would probably vote with Mr. Shear and Mr. Parker and Mr. McCune.
Well, if that's the case, then I think we should stick with the original proposal, recommendation that was made and just do one vote rather than do two votes for the temporary.
I think it's a good compromise. I appreciate the email communication that I've had with families in the area, and for the most part, they've been extremely respectful, and we appreciate that. And we understand the emotionality of it. As we've gone through all these boundaries discussions, it's been interesting to see the number of boundary transfers that have been asked for regularly from buildings. And so, I feel like that's always an option for families in the future, particularly, and one where we're gonna make Ravenwood the size where if every family in that area requested a transfer, we could probably accommodate them, correct?
Yes.
Yes, because we are ultimately alleviating their size.
We looked at those numbers because we wanted to make sure, you know, that if we did take that kidney shape and go back to Ravenwood. Chris Grollop has always told us in looking at all of our schools and operation and capacity, we like to operate at 85%. If this area were to come back to Ravenwood by 2018, it would hit 81%. So, it could still be handled. It gets closer to that number, but yes, to be honest, it could be handled. So, just for my clarification then, so when we say that we're going back to the original motion, this is the Ravenwood Boundaries as it is, but the kidney shape would be a designated transfer? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? And this is just that transfer for the current families that live there in those homes today?
Just as it's written, correct?
Right, and a clarification. So, any area is a transfer area, right? Any parent can initiate a transfer. What you guys are approving, that families in this area will have their transfer approved?
Right.
Okay, so, because anyone, anywhere can apply for a transfer, but as part of this boundary decision, we've designated this area, these 65 homes that live a third of a mile from Ravenwood, that because of that situation, they will get an approved transfer should they choose to stay at Ravenwood.
For the current families that are there now?
For the current homeowner grandfathering those, those current 65 homeowners.
And going forward, those families in that area would be going to Millbrook.
Correct.
Is that correct?
It'd fall back into the purple.
I've got a point of order question. So, we've done a kind of straw poll here. I think we probably do need to break it out just so we can go on record as far as, I really, I would vote no on the temporary. And I would like to be on record as doing so. And then, but I, I don't want to disapprove the boundary changes. So, I don't know if we were out of order, you know, straw pulling and then moving forward, but can we take a step back and, you know, have a point of the record?
I agree. And again, going back to the point of, initially, we talked about having three different motions. I agree with that, that we could do the Ravenwood Boundaries the way it is and make the motion and make the vote on that. And then this, and then have a separate one on this designated, which again, to your point, then if that's what you want, so that way you can separate those out. Does that make sense? Okay.
Everybody clear?
Thank you.
Kick your ass.
As clear as we can be.
One more. Dr. Daniels, you know, we had an email and said that we were making an uneducated decision here, and there's been a lot of work gone there, so it's far, and I'm just thinking again about that area, and maybe I'm rethinking this. Here's the problem that I see. So, we have a family there that's living there that's going to Ravenwood, they're grandfathered in. We have a new family move in that's next door and they're going to Millbrook.
Correct. Correct. But you could have that today. You could have one family, the way that we're designating this, you could live in one house and go to Ravenwood. I could live next door and I'm choosing, I want to go to the new school.
But you have the choice. You have the choice.
And I can make that choice to do that.
In the future, it would not be a choice for the new family.
No, in the future, the new family moving in would be going to Millbrook. And we've done that based on all of the statistical information that we have as far as the population growth, the opportunity for growth, and making sure that we're trying to keep the capacity of those, again, because of the density level of that Ravenwood area, really looking at that and saying, "How do we manage that and be able to make sure that we don't have to go back and do this again somewhere in the future?"
And after an extended period of time, all families in that area would go?
No. Okay. Yes, at some point. Until something else comes up. Again, I mean, we're, we're looking out as far as we can.
That's right.
And, you know, Ms. Felter had a great point. I mean, Millbrook, there's a lot of undeveloped area out there. There's room to grow with that. If that far exceeds what Chris has done up to this point, somewhere down the road, we may have to come back and look at boundaries again. Because again, you're looking at the capacity of those schools. What we don't want is to Millbrook at some point be the one that's, you know, flushed with 700 students in there and we can't, and we can't do a good job of educating. We may have to come back and do. So, we're doing the best educated choice that we possibly can. To your point of the educated or uneducated decision on this, there has been a lot of work done on this, and there has been a lot of statistical information that has been put out there in looking at how is this growth pattern gonna be. And that's the best guess that we could put out there. And if, at least what I've learned so far, and when we're looking at some of these and everything else, is that we've been pretty good at making those estimates and watching that growth. We've been very, very close to that. And so, with that information in there, I do believe we're making a very educated decision on what we're trying to do here. We're also trying to do, and I feel good in my own heart, that we're trying to be able to compromise and work with the families that are living in there, because it is tough. I mean, anytime you have to make a choice, it is tough. And so, I do feel that the board is stepping up and really looking at this and saying, "How can we help you going forward?" But I don't know what the future's gonna be. These 65 families may be there for the next 20 years and there won't be any elementary kids coming in. Those are the things we don't.
It's a good point. And the Boundary Committee meets regularly, and they look at enrollment numbers on a monthly basis. They look at hotspots, and we come back to the board if we anticipate boundary changes, like several years ago, taking kids out of Arbor Creek and sending them to Broome because of enrollment numbers. So, we make elementary boundary changes fairly regularly.
And saying that, I don't know what the problem would be making this either or permanently, since we do change them regularly. Just because we haven't done it before and it's not neat and tidy, to me, is not enough of a reason to say this is temporary. I mean, Amy and I have walked children to school. We've seen the value. I mean, I'm looking at a map and someone put in an email, "You could throw a ping pong ball to Ravenwood from their homes." You couldn't do it to Millbrook from any of these.
Not from that neighbor, you couldn't.
They'd have to have a really good arm.
Yeah, they would.
You could roll it down that main street towards it.
Well, but in a way, Ms. Felter, we are, in a way, we are making a permanent decision going forward that any new homeowners there, their decision is, will be made going to Millbrook. It's giving them the choice today. And it'll be interesting. It'll be interesting if we make this as an option, how many families decide to go to, stay with Ravenwood, or how many decide to go to the new school? You know, that's one of the things we always, we didn't see a lot of that. I didn't see a lot of that from any of these people, even the ones living right next to Millbrook saying how excited we are other than what we're hearing from. So, we're not hearing one, you know, we're hearing some of the people saying that, "I want to stay at Ravenwood," isn't it? And the one thing we gotta make sure that people understand, and sometimes they're making that choice because they're thinking, "Hey, I want to stay there because of this teacher." Well, some of these teachers are gonna be going to Millbrook. And so, they, you know, they may think that today, and then when they find out that, "Hey, I'm with this third grade teacher as I'm coming up," they may be at Millbrook. And so, then now they have a choice to say, "I can go to Millbrook or I can go to Ravenwood." So, we're giving that area at least a choice.
In our number of students, just one more clarification I want to add to this. So, we're projecting that at most by 2018, 36. Some of those are two-year-olds right now, right? Young. So, what decision they'll make three years from now may be different than the one they think they'll make today. You know, again, so we've accounted, they're not all school age right now and already in there. So, we've accounted for some of these families that have younger kids. And I think, I don't, I don't want to project what decision they'll make or want to make a number of years from now.
Would you project, though, that they would like to have the right, if they were the second owner in that house after the Boundaries, to make that decision? See, I think they would want to have that ability to make that decision.
Well, but they do when they choose which house that they want to purchase. I mean, the house I live in now, the house I live in now, I moved there specifically because of the school I wanted to go to and that. When you make this choice going forward, they get, the people that are living there now are the ones I'm concerned with, because they, they get to make that choice. The person coming to move in there after that, if there's a specific school they want to go into, then they need, then they, I looked at it. I knew exactly which house I wanted to go into, and there was several houses that you could look at. This one was a school that I wanted to go to. This is a different one that I said, "No, we wanted to go here." So, we made that choice. I think if you continue with that choice piece of that, it's gonna be more confusing and harder for administration, harder for the school district, and even hard for the families at some point to say, "Where do I want to go? Because I don't know where I actually live here."
See, to me, you just shored up my argument because you bought your house based on the school, and to me, the closest school would likely be the choice. I won't keep splitting hairs. We all have our opinion, but I would like to go on record that I think it should be a permanent area of choice.
Well, if we break it into two votes, then we absolutely would be able to have that as clean and see where we're going with that from that standpoint.
Very good.
So, which one would we like to do first?
So, do you want to do the Ravenwood Boundaries, which is just the clean boundary? That's the straight line down without this optional?
The Millbrook, so Boundaries for Millbrook?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
I don't, would it be better to do Lea's first?
No, I think we have to establish the boundary before we establish a transfer area.
Okay.
So, then I make a motion, correct me if I don't read this out or don't do this correctly. I make a motion to approve the proposed attendance boundary for Millbrook Elementary.
Which would be option, which would be Option C.
Option C.
Option C.
As established. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Parker to approve the proposed attendance boundary for Millbrook Elementary, Option C as presented.
Mr. McCune.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
No.
Let me ask, Option C with the side note of transfer area?
That'll be discussed next.
That's the second vote.
So, I should say no on this then, right? No, I'll just say no. I'm not making a difference anyway, so, no.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
All right. So, now we need to discuss and craft an option that either in, that would allow the option of, for that designated transfer area to be a permanent one. Is that correct? That would be the second option we would be discussing?
An area of transfer.
Right, area of transfer to be permanent.
Should we just designate the area and then have a vote on whether?
I think we just, we need to motion one way or the other, to designate it a permanent transfer area or a temporary transfer area, and then let board members vote.
Cedar Brook.
All right.
Clarification? So, Option C as presented in purple includes that area gridded as transfer. So, when you approved Option C, you approved that as a transfer area. approved option C, you approved that as a transfer area, now you have to decide whether or not it's a permanent transfer.
But we broke out, we said Millbrook, so we didn't do option C, we just said Millbrook boundaries.
Actually, we just said option C.
Did we?
Yes, we did.
The original option C.
The original option C, so now you're going to address separately to make this a transfer area and whether or not it's a permanent transfer, there's actually two pieces in that.
Or grandfathered.
Correct.
So I make the motion to make the little kidney-shaped transfer area of Cedar Brook, right, a permanent transfer area of choice between Ravenwood and Millbrook.
Do you want a second?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
I need to clarify that, because, you know, I apologize for this, because we're making this, but I want to make sure we get this right, so you're making this an area of choice forever, is what you're saying?
That's what I would like to see.
So in the previous vote, we made it an area of choice.
Correct, permanently.
For, in the previous vote, we made it an area of choice for the existing families.
For the existing families.
And now, Ms. Felder can make a vote to make that a permanent area of choice, and then I would second that, yes.
All right, so as I understand the motion, because it's changed multiple times, we would be taking that designated transfer area and making that a permanent area of choice.
Yes.
Between Ravenwood and Millbrook.
Does that capture Ms. Felder?
Yes, the spirit of my intentions.
All right, and Ms. Martin?
Yes.
That captures your wishes, all right, so I have a motion by Ms. Felder and a second by Ms. Martin, and I'm not going to restate it because I probably won't say it the same way twice.
There's more discussion?
More discussion?
No.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. McCune?
No.
Mr. Parker?
No.
Mr. Shear?
No.
Dr. Daniels?
No.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
And so that's it, right on the boundaries?
Correct, the boundaries have been decided, thank you all for your discussion, I appreciate that, thank you for being here this evening, and we appreciate your discussion as well. Let's go back now to item 7.01, which is our action item for curriculars, curriculum honors advanced debate course.
And this item, there's no expense really tied to it, right?
Correct.
What was that, Leah?
There's no cost or expense tied to it, I move to approve the honors advanced debate course addition to the debate course sequence at the high school level.
Second.
Was that Mr. Parker?
Brent.
Or was Mr. McCune?
Yes.
I have to stop looking down, all right, I have a motion by Ms. Felder and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the curriculum honors advanced debate course.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Item 7.02 is related to the purchase of our new K through five elementary reading and language arts curriculum.
We've brought this up before, so just one of the things, is that, this is talking about text and paper materials and things such as that, again, one of the things we keep talking about is technology, and going further with technology, and I would really like to see us continue to see, how do we, how do we provide this in a virtual world going forward, and, you know, is it better to do it in that way, or how do we continue to look at that, and maybe that's a way to reduce some expense of not having all the written materials and doing things virtually, but that means we have to step up more with technology, but that's something I want to encourage, especially when we're, I mean, we're talking about quite a bit of money here, and going forward, just continuing to research and find ways to do this in a more technology-driven way.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Banikowski, but I believe when we had our meeting with you and Ms. Hermrich, Mr. McCune and I, last week, that you talked about the textbook companies recognizing the desire of many districts to avoid purchasing books and going toward electronic documentation, were simply upping the costs of their electronic materials, I don't know if it's the same amount as a textbook, but it, but there was that issue.
And certainly, Luanne Hermrich could add to this as well, but it does not appear at this point to be a cost-saving measure, but it is something that you, it does require more technology for students so that they can be able to have that textbook in the computer or the laptop or the iPad or something on their desk, but there is a lot of technology involved in all of the textbook and instructional materials we are adopting, I think you see that, and I hear Luanne talking about it a lot, it's actually a challenge, but it's a great opportunity, our math series that was selected at the elementary level has lots of technology with it, so we're still looking at the technological part, the digital learning part, even with a traditional textbooks as well.
The other concern for me, if we go to completely electronic textbook, is that we probably have families who wouldn't have access to some of those materials at home as opposed to being able to take a textbook home, so I'm a little anxious about, I love the idea of not having backpacks that weigh 47 pounds, on the other hand, I'm a little nervous about families having access to the materials, they need to be successful, so I just think we need to proceed cautiously, and I'm sure that'll be a part of technology that you bring back to us for further discussion.
It's a great question, and it's always on our radar, and we might always have that problems of those that don't have it, we need to figure it out. Right, how do we get that, and do we do a poll out there to find out how much there is, and is there a way, Olatha Public School Foundations, are you able to help us provide some things out there for some of these families that are, that don't have those same possibilities?
And then, Luanne Hermrich just reminded me again, we do have access for students technologically online for the textbooks, so that is a well-received part of this.
And aren't we currently doing some of our math curriculum online as well, right, so we're moving in the right direction, it's just making sure that our families have access at home that I want to be cautious about.
One more comment about cost, in any size district, this is a large expenditure when you go K through five in a reading adoption, but our staff members do a terrific job of negotiating a price, that's pretty incredible, so it is a large number, but it would be much larger if we didn't have some of the skilled people that we have.
And they're going to buy back our old textbooks, is that correct?
If they're viable, we'll certainly try to do that.
All right, okay, any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I would move to.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd move to approve the purchase of K-5 reading and language arts text and instructional materials as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Felder to approve the purchase of K-5 reading curriculum.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Item 7.03 is our board policy and procedural changes for compulsory immunization requirements and physical requirements, I believe Ms. Gail Moore is in the audience, if there are any questions that need to be directed to her. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve revised policies JGCB and JGCPA as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Felder and a second by Mr. Shear to approve the revised policies JGCB and JGCPA as submitted.
Ms. Hens? Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Item 7.04 is our audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2013.
Good evening, I would like to introduce Audrey Oderman of Meis Hauser &amp; Company, Audrey and her team performed the district's audit for the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013, and she's going to provide you with an overview of the district's audit tonight, as well as answer any questions that you may have.
Good evening, I'm just going to briefly go over some of the letters that we have within the bound part of the financial statements, and then you can ask any questions that you might have, first, I'd like to say that these financial statements are the district's financial statements, all the information within the financial statement is provided by the district, the district takes ownership of the financial statements, the pieces that are our part of the financial statements are the three individual letters within the bound part of the financial statements, the first of which is on page one and two, and that's our independent auditor's report, in this report, we go through, and you can see the different headers, we address several different areas, first, we talk about management's responsibility of the financial statements, we talk about the auditor's responsibility of the financial statements, most importantly, and what most people are most concerned about within the letter, is our opinion in the financial statements, and that's the very last paragraph on page one, you'll see that we give an opinion on the different components of the financial statements, we talk about governmental activities, business-type activities, major funds, the budgetary comparison information, and then the remaining information within the financial statements, each of these components has received an unmodified opinion, that's the highest opinion that the financial statements can receive, speaks very highly about the financial management of the district, the work that the board does, and the direction that they give the staff on guiding the financial aspect of the district, if you go onto page two, we talk about other matters that are addressed within the financial statements, and it really guides you to an additional, some of the additional letters towards the back, before we get to those letters, I want to talk a little bit about page three through eight, this is usually my favorite part of the financial statements, because it's management's opportunity to look at all of the financial information and provide an analysis on what happened in the school this strict year financially, can look at the numbers from the prior year and the numbers from this year, and give kind of a picture of what happened, the areas that, where you may have received additional funding, you may have built some school buildings, and this is just an area that I think is very interesting, it's lay lang, it's not technical language, very easy to read, I encourage you strongly to really look at those pages, I think they're a very interesting part of the financial statement, the second letter, that is, our audit letter, is on page 80 and 81, this letter talks about the internal controls of the district, we, our professional standards don't allow us to give an opinion on internal controls, what they do direct us to do is to tell you if we noted any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control, if you look through that letter, it talks a lot about the procedures that we perform, and you'll see that there weren't any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted, it also talks about compliance with laws and regulations as they relate to the financial statements, there weren't any significant material violations of laws or regulations, and so there isn't a note of any violations of any laws or regulations that relate to the financial statements within that letter, it's very boilerplate language within the letter, because there weren't any significant findings, on page 82 and 83, we talk about major federal programs, that's our last letter within the bound financial statements, and this piece of the audit is what we call a single audit, so any entity that spends more than $500,000 in federal aid has to have a special audit, we go in and we look at all of the different federal programs that the district receives, and we'll select major programs and rotate them every three years, and audit them to make sure that they are in compliance with federal regulations as well as state regulations, because most of your money runs through the state, your federal money runs through the state before it comes to you, so there's federal regulations, and then the state puts a little pile of their own regulations on there, and so we're making sure that those federal programs are in compliance with both of those entities, this program that we selected this year to audit was a special education cluster, we go through and we look at supporting documentation for all of the various expenditures of that grant, but we also look at the compliance regulations that are set forth by the federal and state entities, that grant received an unmodified opinion, again, it speaks very highly about the work that is done, each year we talk about, that these, each individual departments have to go through and make sure they're in compliance with the regulations, those two entities don't ever take regulations away, they add some on, and they change things continually, there'll be some big changes probably in the next one or two years, and the department here does a very good job of making sure that they're in compliance with that information, and very easy to find information, we're very helpful, I actually audited that piece of the financial statements, and we were very helpful and very professional, and so we appreciate all the hard work that that department does as well, as well as all of the different departments that we go and see when we, when we're here, so, any questions?
I'm just asked, how do you choose a department, is it a random thing?
Well, if, if, if a grant spends more than $300,000 in federal aid, it has to be audited at least every three years, and so we're rotating those constantly to make sure that we're getting adequate coverage, so last year, we probably didn't do special education, but we probably did Head Start and Title I, and so we're rotating those through to make sure that every three, at least every three years, they're getting audited, we have to audit at least 25% of all those grants in a given year, so there's some year we might do one, there's a year we might do four, just depending on the rotation process.
I noticed that the auditor did have two comments in regards to a couple areas, and the response that our finance department gave was very good, and appreciate that our new financial software is going to make our job easier, because I think, I think the reasons for the comments were some, some, we just didn't have the firepower, the work power to get it done, but now we do, to make sure that, all those kinds of things that were concerns, which were pretty minor as regards to making sure that the receipts were validated, and you have to have like six things when you turn in a receipt, when, what, why, who, who spent, and, and we just didn't, our software didn't have the capability to track that, and now we do, so that was a good investment on behalf of the board.
I think both of these comments are software-related, and I think that there's big changes that have already occurred, and they, they always respond very quickly, and always have great ideas on how they can make those changes to alleviate those, those comments in future years.
The other one was on just identification and capitalization of fixed assets, which again, our software didn't allow us to do that, the previous software, but the new software is going to be, give us a capability to track that better, and, you know, this is pretty ho-hum stuff, it seems like, but to the, but if, if it wasn't, wasn't ho-hum, then the public would lose confidence in us.
Somebody would notice.
Yeah, somebody would know it big time, and we would hear about it, so, and also the bond ra, the bond folks, the rating agencies want to see this as well.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's real, it's critical to the, to the, to the community and to our taxpayers and to our, our revenue, and kudos to our finance department for giving a finance report with just two comments, both software-related, not human error or any, anything of that nature, so, with that, anybody else have any comments?
Lastly, I just want to thank John and Cassie and Jenny for all their hard work, we were out here right in the middle of them implementing the payroll software, and they still had smiles on their faces, so we appreciate that and how professional they are when we're here.
So it's with great pride, I move to approve the audit reports for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Ms. Felder to approve the audit reports for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013 as presented, Ms. Hens?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes. Just one more comment, there's a lot of things that keep board members awake at night, but this one here doesn't, so, again, thank you.
Not when you get this.
Not when you get this, so.
Thank you for all of your hard work, it's very much appreciated, all right, and also thank you to our patrons who recognized and understood the need to approve very expensive technology that allowed us to make changes that were very much overdue, all right, 7.05 is our mileage reimbursement rate, does this mean when I drive around the district, I can submit a bill to you?
No, ma'am.
Oh, darn.
Good try, though.
Okay.
I move to approve the district's mileage reimbursement rate for privately-owned vehicles effective January 1st, 2014, to 56 cents per mile.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Felder and a second by Mr. Shear to approve the change to the mileage reimbursement rate.
Ms. Hens? Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Item 7.06 is celebrate Freedom Week, do we have any questions or comments?
None.
All right, then I would entertain a motion.
Motion to designate Celebration Freedom Week to coincide with Constitution Day, September 17th for the Olatha Public Schools.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Felder to designate the Celebration Freedom Week to coincide with Constitution Day for the Olatha Public Schools, Ms. Hens?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felder?
Yes.
All right, we are at that point in our agenda where we have future item, excuse me, future action items, 8.01 through 8.05, I know that Ms. Lyon is going to do a presentation for 8.03, so let's look at 01, 02, 04, 05, and see if there are any questions before we ask Liette. Rita to do her presentation. All right, Rita, you're up.
Well, I certainly hope this is much less stressful than safety and security and much more fun than boundaries. We have some great information to share with you, and I really, whoops, let me get back here where I need to be. And I apologize because we're not at the beginning of this. Here we go. Okay. So I hope that you will find this presentation answering some of your questions about what you just mentioned about some of our electronic textbooks and where we're headed with some of that. I thank you for letting us bring this presentation to you after a very long evening, so we'll try and make this very short. We are very excited about the opportunity that the bond is giving us to infuse some more technology into our schools, and we have really been very busy since June, working on some action plans to prepare to infuse this technology. We know, as you know, that technology is an ever-moving target, and to make sure that we know as much about that target as we possibly can, we knew that we needed to set a mission and a goal as we moved into the phase of spending the technology bond money. You can see here that we have set a mission to research and implement effective technology with the goal to improve student learning. And I'm going to turn this presentation over to Connie Smith, who has really been leading this project for us. So Connie, you're on.
Okay, thanks. Well, as Rita said, the passing of the two thousand and thirteen bond really has provided a unique opportunity for our district, and specifically, it's allowed the teaching and learning division and technology divisions to work together, to step back and sort of approach instructional technology from a new perspective, and to involve the selection, the purchase, and considering potentially the impact of technology on student achievement, which is, of course, why we do it in the first place. So rather than simply taking things for granted and purchasing more of what we already have in our buildings, laptops, student response systems, and the like, we stepped back and said, okay, let's redefine what a district-wide vision for instructional technology and related goals, and in that, identify exactly what our staff and students are asking for in the way of technology from bottom up instead of top down, and at the same time, realizing the need to identify new instructional strategies and pedagogical practices in the classroom to involve the integration of technology. And so we wanted to do that by, again, asking our educators as well as some, a group of students, to help us with that. And so with those goals in mind, we set in motion a process for, which brings us to where we are tonight, and I'm going to briefly describe what that process has been. Summer conference last year, we developed TAP groups by identifying staff based on recommendation from both district and building administrators. Approximately two hundred and fifty teachers came together at student, at summer conference, and began to discuss, what does instructional technology look like for twenty-first century schools, and how is it going to impact students? And following that, the conversation continued, and in June this past year, we held a vendor fair here at the Education Center and Instructional Resource Center, and over forty vendors participated, over five hundred staff attended, and was very well-received by staff, and really provided our educators something that is uncommon, which is, was a way to interact with the newest technologies out there without having to send a small group of staff at district expense to conferences and the like. Following that, the summer and fall has been dedicated to those groups, which amounted to about forty-five Technology Action Plan TAP groups, who got together, did research, discussed, hey, what's, here's our opportunity, what do we need? And that would enable us to do something bigger, better, different with students than what we currently have. If it's not going to be any different, then what, then we need to step back and say, why? Because we're spending a good deal of money. So then, those technology action plans were submitted to our teaching and learning tech team, our tech steering committee at the district level, and that brings us to what we're debating for and proposing for next semester, which is what we're naming our proof of concept phase. This is going to allow us to involve a small group of teachers at every grade level in our district, at every core curricular area in our district, where they are going to prove different technologies and provide feedback on a regular basis for the duration of second semester. We're proofing what we've deemed to be device concepts as well as idea concepts. So if Rita and I were both fifth-grade instructors in the district, we would be next door to each other, and I would be proofing, what does an iPad implementation look like in my classroom? And Rita would be proofing, what does a Windows tablet implementation look like in my classroom? What are the pros and cons? Are there things that I, as an educator, haven't thought about that would be definite, no, we don't want this? And so at the same time, we'll be proofing some different device projection solutions, and for the most part, all of those kinds of peripheral types of things are being provided by vendors at no cost for our district, competing with each other. We want to make sure it fits in our network. It's exactly what we want as a solution for our next stage of technology. We're also talking about idea concepts. As you have, I talked about earlier this evening, a BYOD for students. What does that look like? And so we are going to take a look at high school debate and forensics courses for second semester, which involves just over two hundred and twenty students, I believe, at all four high schools, to make it an equal playing field for those groups of students, and give them the opportunity to bring their own device. When given the opportunity to bring their own devices, what do they bring? And allowing us to be informed about that, what types of devices do parents buy into that, and provide devices for students and that kind of thing, and allow us to really take a look at, is our infrastructure exactly the way it needs to be when we scale up, something like that, across the district at all four high schools for all students? At the same time, we have a smaller group of students who is part of Dr. Barry's Superintendent Student Advisory Committee, where we are going to have on a rotation basis four different types of devices to get student input. What allows them to take that device into all of their classrooms, use it at optimal level, and get student input from that? And finally, what we believe is just as important as any other aspect of this pilot or proofing concept is professional development for staff. When we infuse our classroom with more technology, we can't expect them to just know how to use it or what to do with it. And so we're going to use a research-based model, the SAMR/CMR model, and really focus on, rather than just substituting the new and great technology for pencils, papers, textbooks, those kinds of things that we would assume with just, that's going to come with the technology, but rather taking a look at how can we redefine what we're doing with technology to really impact student learning and achievement. And so throughout the second semester, teachers that are involved in this proof of concept period will be being asked to, okay, what are you doing with the technology in your classroom? And is it an S? Is it an A? Is it an M and an R? And providing that feedback to both district leadership, building leadership, as well as every other teacher that's in their core area, or every other teacher in their grade level, so that when the time comes to scale up across the district, that concept is not foreign to those teachers that are not currently involved in the proof of concept period for second semester. So again, we strongly believe that this is the way to go, rather than just deciding and purchasing additional technology and putting it out there in our classrooms, but making sure that we've taken the time to investigate, to research, to make the wise decisions that will have the greatest impact on our students. And with that, Rita's going to talk about the timeline for implementation and what we're asking for purchase-wise.
Thank you, Connie. We are very fortunate to have vendors in our district that are going to provide us a significant amount of equipment to test at no charge, but we do have some purchasing that we need to do to make this happen in the realm of iPads and tablet devices. Those are devices that we have already vetted out and we know are successful in classrooms. So we do, we will be bringing a bid to you in January to approve some purchase of those devices for these proof of concepts. Connie and her team, and she's done an amazing job with this. I have to publicly thank her and her team. It's been a phenomenal amount of work. They've done a great job, but they will be doing a lot of training throughout January and February, really through the entire next semester. This will take a lot of work on their part to make sure that teachers are very comfortable with using this technology. And we will spend the entire second semester and maybe even into next fall. We don't want to rush into this. We want to spend this money wisely, and we want to make sure that when we put it in the classroom, it's going to be well-used. So that's kind of where we're at with this project. We wanted to bring this forward because you will hopefully be approving a bid in January to get started on this. So with that, questions?
What's the funding source? Is it?
Two thousand and thirteen bond.
Two thousand and thirteen bond.
Rita, with all the devices that we're going to purchase or looking to purchase, do we have the servers? Do we have the foundation? Do we have all the networking in place already? And we're just, now we're at the point of just tying these into everything that we already have?
We certainly do for these proof of concepts. Now, down the road, if it is the board's decision to go to some type of one-to-one initiative, we'll be looking at some upgrading of infrastructure for that, but for this proof of concept, and really into the next, at least the next phase or two, we have the infrastructure. We've been, we've been working on that and building on that for quite some time.
And I give Rita credit for that. We didn't want to start a bring-your-own-device and then have it crash around us. That's why we've been a little slow, and she's built the system up now, and we're ready to do some of this.
As you know, we have rolled out bring-your-own-device for all staff across the district everywhere. So that's been up and running. Surprisingly, there hasn't been as heavy a use of that as we initially thought, but it is being used and it is working well.
And are we communicating to parents that they're not expected to increase their technology purchases for their student for this?
Good question. Connie is working with Dr. Dugan and several folks to come up with a written document and a proposal to these parents that are going to be involved, these debate and forensic students that are going to be involved in this BYOD, and certainly, there is no expectation that they have to participate.
No, but I could see a lot of students bringing that expectation home.
Yeah, my daughter already said I had to get her the latest and greatest iPad to be a part of this.
And I bet you rushed right out to the Apple store, didn't you?
I'm glad we're getting that clarification today.
You know, we realize in all this, moving forward down the road, we will have a lot of students that will choose to bring their own devices. When we did our tour in Dallas with the design team, we saw a lot of that. We also know that there are students who don't have that opportunity or choose not to bring their own. So we've got a lot of things to work through yet. We're a long way from the end, but this is, I think, a great start.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Yes, thank you.
We are at written information items. Questions, comments? Then let's move on to our board topics for discussion. Do I have board members who have topics for discussion?
I just have one. Battle of the brains, winners, champions, again, I imagine that we're going to recognize them in the future. I would think it would be really appropriate if we also asked the CEO of Burns Mac to join us for that, Mr. Greg Graves.
Yeah, we could see about that.
And also, maybe if he couldn't make it, some representatives from Burns McDonald and showcase them as well during our presentation and our recognition.
See what we can do.
Thank you.
Ms. Felter, did you have one?
I do. I'd like to. I know that Mrs. Ashley had had us, when I first joined the board, we were meeting at five?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. And it helped her with her commute to move it to six. I don't know if five thirty works for anybody. I'm just thinking of all you guys that have been here all day, nine o'clock, that's late. Does five thirty work for anybody?
I don't think we can change it now because we already established it in July. Does the coma allow us to change the meeting time in the middle of the year?
We could check it, but I would think so. In July, it's for organization for the year, so that's why you do that, not anticipating you change it, but I would think, but we'd want to check it out, that a board could do that. Scott Mason?
Certainly, we could.
I would want to make sure that, rather than think, I'd rather have it. Yes or no?
Yeah. If we could just put in the future even to talk, I mean, all you shiny, bright-eyed people are glazing over, and I want you to know, we're sensitive to that, and we appreciate your long day, and thirty minutes can make a big difference, so.
Not looking too good out there.
Aren't they gorgeous?
You know, since I've been on the board, we originally changed it to five thirty for the benefit of the staff because it does go, some nights, meetings do go long. Then we changed to six for the public because, and for some instances, for board members as well, but really for the public because it's difficult for public to get here at five thirty, for a five-thirty meeting when they left downtown or left their jobs at five o'clock. So it was changed to six to accommodate the public. I mean, that's really the underpinning of that change to half an hour later. So I think we're here to serve the public, so I'd want to think, I personally wouldn't be in favor of that. I like the, I like the five thirty hour because I could get home earlier, but I understand that the six o'clock hour works better for our community to make the meetings on a more timely basis. So that's why we made the change, whenever we made the change four or five years ago.
Nobody ever wants to do it at seven AM with me.
Never.
Yeah.
I think it was just three years ago.
Was it three years ago?
It wasn't that long ago. I think the time was, the reason was Rita.
No, we changed it to s-
It's since I've been on the board.
Oh, I thought we did it when Dr. Wimmer was-
We'll ask the clerk in the board to tell us, let us know when we made that change, from five thirty to six.
It was after I came on the board. It was, it was with Dr. Barry.
My first year, I believe.
Okay, all right.
Any other board comments? Board member comments?
You're on, Dr. Barry.
I'll be quick, but try not to hurry. Thing that I find unbelievable, we are ten days away from being half over with the school year. Truly, it's hard to imagine that. Something that you've seen already in a release, but I just want to toot our horn just a little bit on that, it is the advanced placement, fourth annual honor roll, and the Alatha School District was placed on that honor roll. Four hundred and seventy-seven districts in the country, but only three in the state of Kansas. So again, we have increased our usage of advanced placement, but not only that, you have to maintain the high standard of scores, the high scores that we've gotten at the same time to get placed on that honor roll. So really positive for what our staff does in that realm. Can't, don't have the time to talk about construction. We'll start to be bringing more updates to you, but there's an awful lot going on. Again, I appreciate the setting of boundaries tonight. That's a difficult thing for Millbrook, but it's going to be a beautiful school. It's really starting to come along and get finished up, and it's going to be really nice. This campus right now is a challenge for us. If you've been here during the day, you kind of have to look around the corner before you venture out in terms of the traffic patterns. It is working for us, but there's an awful lot going on, not only with the technology support building, but again, I'm excited even about this food production center because we're taking care of our investment. Foundation problem, bricks falling off, and we're taking care of it, adding on a little bit of storage at the same time, so it's going to be very positive. Again, we anticipate that it'll take care of us through entire build-out of our district in terms of a food production center. We met the past two days with Hollison Miller and SHW, our architectural firm, the national firm, as we continue to talk about high school number five and some of the concepts. Still a lot of visioning going on, talking about a lot of concepts. We'll be bringing some more back to you to talk about, but it's exciting to talk about what that fifth high school is going to be like. We are involving teachers, administrators, coordinators. We have a pretty good-sized group that's been meeting with us, and again- Again, we anticipate that it'll take care of us through entire build-out of our district in terms of a food production center. We met the past two days with Hollison Miller and SHW, our architectural firm, the national firm, as we continue to talk about High School Number Five and some of the concepts. Still a lot of visioning going on, talking about a lot of concepts. We'll be bringing some more back to you to talk about, but it's exciting to talk about what that fifth high school's going to be like. We are involving teachers, administrators, coordinators, we have a pretty good-sized group that's been meeting with us, and again, there'll be more opportunities for more groups to reflect on what we're doing. Chris Gollup gives us the update, we continue to grow, since the count day, we've grown 90 kids now. We've had 55 building permits in November, that's 465 for the year now, well surpassing what we had all of last year. Unfortunately, in that formula, I don't mean to cry for money, but those are 90 kids after the count date, would be over a half million dollars that we could gain in our, to help educate those kids, but that's not the way our formula works, so we educate them this year anyway, but they're just additional. You've already heard mention and how our software transition that we've made in the finance area has worked out so well for us, and Rita and her staff were willing to take on the next big chunk, and that's that student information system. And I'll just give you a quick update, but we'll be bringing you an update, you know, later. But the hardware and software is installed and running. They're right now working on the system configuration and data conversion, but you've got to think about this, a student information system, it's not the 29,000 kids we currently have, it's kids early in the system, as well as have been through the system, that we have to maintain data on. 117,000 kids, the data for those folks are, are having to be converted and put in, so it's a, a huge task. But the benefits are going to be turned, just terrific for us. Not only from a tech standpoint, they used to have to coordinate and sync up all the things that we did with parent access, student access, teacher grade books, that'll all happen now. And the second piece is that we'll give our teachers access to their grade book anyplace, because it'll be web-based, and the, the student information anyplace, meaning a principal can have a device in the back part of the building and call up student information, even see a picture of a kid if they need to, to have that information, address, whatever it might be. That's accessible now instantly on the technology that we have, so we're kind of excited about that. Just a real quick dip-sticking, I had the opportunity to present Tuesday as part of a group to the Alitha Chamber Quarterly Meeting, and then today to the Johnson County Chamber President's Council. Just want to let you know what's on their mind as they ask questions, and here's the top three. The Gannon case, the Supreme Court issue that's coming out soon, they want to know what prediction is. I told them we work on predicting enrollments, not Supreme Court decisions. They want to know about Common Core standards, how it's relating, again, to our district specifically, and then just in general, the legislative session that's coming up. But that's on the minds of people who, again, are very supportive of education in Johnson County, just as Mr. Parker mentioned, you know, chambers of commerce that are very appreciative of the work that all Johnson County schools do to, to help educate our kids. So that's a quick, quick update.
Thank you, Dr. Berry. All right. We need to have executive session. How long do you think we need?
I'd like 15 minutes, and think that we could maybe do it.
Okay. So maybe 9:20, 9:25?
Let's say 9:25.
Yeah, all right. I would entertain a motion. Who wants to read this long motion?
I will.
All right.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, for the purpose of discussing matters relating to employer-employee negotiations, and for the preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 9:25 in this room. The executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position and the public interest, and to protect the district's financial interest and bargaining position.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter for executive session. Ms. Hibs, would you call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Let's do it. Let's do this. All right.
Over there, weren't you?
I was getting ready.
Shut you down.
You did. Woo-hoo!
Closed you out.
All right. We have returned on time. I will make one announcement of a transfer. We have a principal who will be transferring from Central Elementary, Stephanie Dansko, to Millbrook Elementary, and we are sad for Central. I know Central families and teachers will be sad. We are excited for Millbrook Elementary. That will be a great start to the traditions that will be there. And now, I would entertain a motion.
I will move to approve cross-contingent real estate contracts for the exchange of approximately 12 acres of land with Lenexa Land Holding LLC for a total exchange price of $360,000.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the cross-contingent real estate contracts for the exchange of approximately 12 acres of land with Lenexa Land Holding LLC.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?